Okay, sorry, we're a few minutes late tonight. It's about 10 after 6:00. We're trying to get our electronics working so that everybody that wants to participate is able to participate. We are convening our work session for the City Council or the City of Woodland Hills. It is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And it's about 10 after 6:00. And the first thing we're going to discuss are the gates on Summit Creek Drive. And we will allow public comment on this. We ask you to keep your comments to two minutes or less. I'll give you a little signal at one and a half minutes so that you know that you have only 30 seconds left. And we will begin with members of the public in attendance here in the multipurpose room. So Wayne, will you send them in one at a time so that they can make comment? It should have some green light. Okay, will you state your name? Sorry, I'm a little purple. I know, just figuring it out. So you just state your name for the record and we will. Great, thanks.
Hey, my name is Ben Brenly. And I represent Summit Creek. And so I just wanted to take the two minutes. And first of all, just thank the City Council, the mayor, the planning commission, everyone that's worked with us on the gates. I know the gates have been a topic of discussion for a long time. And we feel like we're finally getting to, you know, some sort of resolution, which we're grateful for. I've also am aware of a lot of comments from Woodland Hills at large, a lot of, you know, for and against the gates, and we appreciate that as well. You know, the public process where we can hear both sides and hear people's concerns. And so we're grateful for that opportunity. We feel like we have provided a lot of information that the city has asked for, you know, pros, you know, for in favor of the gates, you know, related to, you know, the access during an emergency traffic control, the legalities of the gates. And so you have all that information and we're happy to share that and try and work through those issues. And so I guess my comment would be that now that it sounds like we're getting to a point where the city might be voting on what to do with the gates on Summit Creek Drive. And so we would just make a final plea that that you consider all the information and the facts and votes in a way that would, you know, allow the gates to continue on Summit Creek Drive. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Hey Wayne, will you send in? Next commenter. And for those of you on Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, will you please raise your hand in the Zoom way so that when we're ready, Jody can call on you? Can you shut the door because we get a big echo? Please state your name.
This is Bucky Gay with Summit Creek. Thanks for letting us come in today and give some more comments. We know that there's been lots of discussions about the gates and we appreciate the city. We appreciate, we know that this has been a hard thing to figure out. And we appreciate all the time and effort that the city's put into this. I was driving down here and just reflecting on, you know, when the gates got built. And we would have, you know, we would just, we would have never put those gates in if we didn't feel like they were approved by the city. And we have done everything we can to try to come up with a solution that works for everybody. And we've been through all the facts. And our only ask tonight is that you make a decision and that you make a decision that hopefully benefits those who it impacts the most, which is the, you know, Summit Creek neighborhood of Woodland Hills. And we appreciate everything that you've done. And if there's more that we can do, we're willing to continue to work through that with the city. I feel like everybody deserves the right to hopefully be able to move forward and, and, you know, and make the best of the situation. So thank you for everything you've done and appreciate everything.
Thank you. All right, Wayne.
But I feel like we're the students.
Crazy. No, I appreciate your time. Anyway, so when you can start the clock, because I know you want to do that.
Steve Dicker.
Yes, yeah, my name's Steve Dicker. I represent the financial backing behind Summit Creek and in that development. So I'd like to take us back just a long time for some of us. With Mayor Larsson was still alive and we were doing things quite a bit differently than I think what we're doing today. Much more formal today, much more informal back in the day. There was conversations being had between us and Mayor Larsson, you and Mayor Larsson. We were kind of just going our ways, working together and trying to get through, to get through this. I think as Bucky had stated, that there's probably some things that we may have done differently had, had we had the formal process that we had today. But the gates were there and they were operational for a period of time, right? Didn't have a lot of complaints that we had heard about. Then we had the, you know, the dreadful fire and the fear of that. And then we left them open for a period of time. We brought them back, thanks to the, to the City Council allowing us to do that and kind of pushing forward so that we could come to some resolution on this. I think in reality, if we were to all teleport ourselves back through time and go back to that initial meeting and go forward knowing what we know today, I think it would have been, I think we would have ended up in a, we wouldn't have ended up here trying to figure out what happened eight years ago or whenever the gates were put in or whenever the road was being developed. In fact, when our development was going in. A lot of the reason that we put the development in there was to make it different. It was a gated community, right, is what we wanted to try to make it. So that people would feel that they were safe and secure and they had the privacy and those kinds of things.
30 seconds. Okay, sorry.
Reality or not, it is perceived by those residents. So I'd ask you to reach out to those residents. I think it wishes for fishes, to quote Dennis, I would go back in time and say, look, we wouldn't have not put in the road, we would not have put in the gates and we would not have developed Summit Creek without that being a private road. We're willing to consider taking that road back to being a private road, taking all of the maintenance on the road, handling all the speed issues that are on the road. And then I think what our proposal would be is to leave the gates open during the winter. And in the spring and fall, we open and close the bottom gate. Then during the daylight hours, we leave the upper gate open. And I hope that be something that the many would consider if in fact they decide to change what we're doing with the gates and not leave them closed as part of the community or leave Summit Creek road.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, thank you. Jody, who we got lined up to speak?
If anyone who was wanting to speak would, okay, Dwayne Severson.
Sorry, who did you say?
Dwayne Severson.
Hi.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Dwayne Severson. I just wanted to make.
You're still muted. We can't hear you. Let's get your.
He needs to turn his volume up.
Turn your volume up. There, we hear you now.
It's up all the way. Sorry. This is Dwayne Severson. I just wanted to add my, my two cents worth. I spend all day, every day on Summit Creek Drive. And it is, is, there was quite a difference when you're talking road safety, speed, all sorts of different issues there when the gates were closed. So I would propose that they allow the gates to open and close. And hope that my two bits helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else raising their hand? Dennis, listen.
Hey Dennis.
You're muted.
You're still muted? Yeah, there you go.
There we go. My point is that there is no precedence in the state of Utah for private gates on public roads. That's what the precedent is. In the research that I've done, I can find no precedents anywhere in the United States for private gates on public roads. It's a issue that could cause some litigation for the city at some point in the future. And if the council feels it's in the best interest of the entire city of Woodland Hills to set a new precedence for the state of Utah and go down that road and it may lead us to places we don't want it to go. You know, I was living here when the gates went in and I discussed this with members of the City Council who told me those gates were supposed to be welded shut.
Welded up is what you mean?
Welded open, excuse me. The mayor doesn't have the ability to make an executive decision to open and close gates. That's got to be something that's done by council. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we've come to this point where there's some issue in our city. And I certainly wish that Summit Creek could have their wishes. But the fact is, we've got a public road, which is a, one of the two main arteries out of town. Important safety road that residents of Woodland Hill that were promised another road, which was needed is, you know, we have building that has gone on and we need more infrastructure to get cars in and out of town. So that's my thing, precedence. Do you want to change it or not? Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Hey, Jody, anybody else with their Zoom hand raised?
I'm not seeing anyone there.
I have my hand up.
Further comment? We're open now for this.
All right. Thank you. You can hear me.
Hand raised.
Yeah, yes, I do. I just want, you can hear me, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to say that a few, for quite a few months this spring, the vehicle speed machine was in front of our home. And we live right on Summit Creek. So I was, we were both able to see the speed of vehicles going down or up, well, down Summit Creek every day, any time of the day. And we had calculated about between 50 and 75% of the cars were going past the speed limit, which was very concerning for us. So last time it was mentioned by somebody that there, that was, those closed gates being closed did not have any effect on the speed. But I can tell you from watching that daily that it very much does have some effect on the speed of cars. I think people get in, they know, they are reminded they're, they're in a residential area and they slow down. We've also, both of us individually have had cars try to pass us twice on that road. Once when a car was coming up in the other direction and once between four cars or parked trucks for construction and then we're going down and someone was trying to pass us to go, you know, down also. Very incredibly dangerous thing. So I think we really need to, I would love the gates to be able to open and close because of speed only. Second thing is that I understand people need choices. And fortunately, when we live up here, we do have a choice. And if there's a personal emergency going on and you just don't think the gate's going to open for some reason, or you're in a hurry, look at the choice. You can go down Woodland Hills Drive. It actually comes down to that, I don't know how you say that, 112 or 11200 street, just very close to where Woodland Hills comes down. So it would not take very much more time to go down Woodland Hills than it does Summit Creek if you feel like you didn't want to open and wait for the gates to open and close. And also, I would like the city at some point to consider the 25 mile hour zone in there. I've been to Salem, Payson, residential areas, very similar to ours, Alpine, and they all have 25 miles per hour.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Some good input.
Carrie has her hand raised.
Who did you say?
Carrie.
Oh, Carrie. Okay, well, if we're done getting comments, then let's, we'll open up for the discussion. So Carrie.
Yes, sorry, I hope I can, you can hear me, okay?
I hear you great.
I'm sitting outside and I just want to make sure you can hear me.
For a little bit, they might just cut you off.
Well, at least I'm not showing the lake in the background today. Really, really, really smoky here, lots and lots of wildfires. So anyways, I first of all, wanted to say I appreciate Ben, Bucky and Steve for all the work that they have done in our community and continue to do. We appreciate and working well with them in development of Summit Creek as part of our city of Woodland Hills. I have personally kept track of all of the public comments that we've received, whether it's been public comments during our meetings, phone calls I've received, emails I've received, text messages I've received. I kept track of all of that and, and appreciate also all of the engagement that the citizens have had. With that, I have a couple of things that I've also done for investigation on what we should do. First of all, I contacted the League of Cities and Towns Attorney and asked their opinion. Sent something out to every mayor in this state to see if there was any precedence, if any of them had gates on public roads. And there wasn't anyone that said they did. And all of them who asked why I said this, highly advised against it. So then I called the League of Cities and Towns Attorney, which of course, we are a member of the league. And again, we had quite a frank discussion about, about gates on public roads. And as an attorney, they highly, highly discouraged the idea of a public road being gated. I then decided that, and all of this was for legality reasons, of course. I, I called our insurance company, the Utah Government Trust. And although, Michelle, you say some people would just be able to drive around, that's not always the case. If, if there's somebody who's having an emergency and, and is on their way down the hill, a minute or even less could make a very big difference. And if they got all the way down there and had to turn around and go all the way back, unfortunately, that would be, really be a liability for the city. And so our, our insurance company, Utah Government Trust, said, please do not do this. It would not be good for your city. Again, when we go back to the beginning, although I was not on the council at the time, I was a citizen of Woodland Hills at the time. It was my understanding that part of the initial development approval, although there was not a development agreement in place, was that we needed an additional emergency access road. And we needed another, just traffic was getting to the point where we needed another road anyways. And it was part of that agreement that was put in place, that we would have that road. And so although there are some citizens who feel that it was Summit Creek's road and then they gave it over, in reality, it's all roads in Woodland Hills. The developer puts the roads in and then dedicates them to the city upon completion. And so I think there's some misgivings there. I also went back through my emails and I found an email that was from Bucky dated March 19th, 2014, that was sent. And it talked about things at the City Council meeting. And it says, attached is a monument we would like to put on the new access road right by the Ranch Knoll. This site is indicated on the attached map. And there's two pictures, which I can't show you. The gate you see on the attached rendering, we would like to have welded open. And that's from Bucky. And I think that's a significant email in that it appears that that was always the discussion, that that would, that would need to, to be discussed. It's important that we have safety. It's important that we control the speed. But let's deal with that rather than changing some of the things that have been historically. As we know, there was a preliminary plat that included the gates as monuments, but not as working gates. And, and so because of that, although I appreciate everybody's comments and I really appreciate working with our partners in the development, with attorneys and with our, with our insurance company and with this past email, it appears to me that they were meant to be welded open.
Counsel, do you have any comments or discussion points?
We all do.
Go ahead.
I'm interested.
No, we'll start, we'll go to you guys.
I, I would be happy to, to talk for a minute. I guess the meeting's officially, or the work session's officially started with Carrie's comments.
Yeah.
This has been a very interesting series of months and turned into years of time where, where our city is where we are. I happen to be, and I think Wendy was too, I was on the council during all of those initial years of deciding about that road. The first thing I want to mention is I really love that road and it really needs to stay and be owned by the city as it's always been. I remember the meeting we held where for 25 years nearly, we were finally able to get all three of the owners along the property where the road goes now, all of them to agree to, to, to participate with the city and let us build a road through there, through the developer. And we paid money for property to the Hanks family. And, and those are, those are important times for our city. And we celebrate having that, that go all the way down to 11200 as it does. So that had been worked on for a long time. And to see that come to fruition, I credit Mayor Larsson. I have appreciated hearing all of the public input on this. I have not missed a public hearing where it has been pertaining to gates. We started many, many months ago with public hearings on this issue. I think we could have rebuilt Rome in the time we've decided about these gates. But, but I won't take a lot of time, but I could. But I just, I just will say, it's not worth reviewing the history, in my opinion, because we are where we are today. I wish the council, in hindsight, I wish we'd have taken action just a month or a few months after these gates became operational, way back in the beginning of time. Because now what we have is a different situation than just a yes or no, gates should be on public roads or not. I could debate gates on public roads, but, and I will mention that if our citizens wanted to put a gate at the bottom of Woodland Hills Drive, we could put one there, whether it's public or not. We could do that because there was one there before. So our city has had gates and, and for whatever reason, you know, probably maintenance issues, you know, they're gone. But so I, I really appreciate the input from citizens on both sides of this issue. And I wouldn't argue against anything either side is saying. But, but what I have to consider in a vote on this, and I hope this is voted on tonight, what I have to say is that the 40-plus residents that live along that road are the innocent victims in all of this, in my opinion. They, they saw the gates when they bought property, they saw the gates when they built their homes. And they had no reason whatsoever to assume that that environment would change over there. And I would not vote against, I, I wouldn't vote to change anything in the environment around somebody's home. That's kind of been my philosophy in eight years on the City Council. So, so I support the fact of what the citizens saw when they bought. I'm not in favor of rezoning even. Things like that, that change the area around where you built at the time you, you built. I, I'd like to preserve that where possible. And it's unfair for me, especially to, to change that environment that those people had every right to believe would, would stay in place. So I appreciate Bob's input. I appreciated him sharing his document with me. And I looked at every point system that he came up with. And, and frankly, I think the point system needed more emphasis on the fact that the citizens that live on that road are the, are the public I would, I would defend. But again, I certainly understand votes on both sides of this issue. Anyway, I'm, I'm interested in hearing the other council's opinion and, and appreciate, especially appreciate Summit Creek for having left those gates open. Every winter, they've been operational, they've been very cooperative. When the fire chief asked them to, to leave them open, they have complied every time and are very quick to, to answer our, anytime I've communicated with them, they've been very quick to, to take action. So I appreciate working with them as well. I believe if Mayor Larsson were alive, he would vote to keep the gates in place.
Unfortunately, he wouldn't have a vote.
I know, I know. But, but I don't know the conversations he had with developers or whatever, and it doesn't matter to me today. But, but I'll just say, I, I think that was his intent. And, and although, you know, as you say, mayor, it isn't, it isn't his place, but.
I would agree with you though. I mean, it just with the discussions and stuff that we had with him, I think you are right that that's where he would have stood.
And, and let me finally say my final thought. I listened to the Summit Creek residents with tears as a group express feelings about those gates that I never knew existed. And I, I would have voted early on to just immediately, gosh, let's, let's, let's keep that road open, weld everything open and put gates on it, until I heard the Summit Creek residents explain right or wrong isn't the issue about the way they feel about them. It is just the way they feel about them that had an impact on me. And they want those gates to remain operational, much worse than I want to take that away from them. So with that, I'll conclude.
Okay, thanks, Doral. Paul?
So I wasn't counsel and didn't know anything about the, the history. So it's, my perspective has come from my time on the council and listening to what's been said. So I'm glad we have perspectives on that. Some of you were on the council and heard firsthand, I wasn't. So I'm somewhat limited there. But as we've got the discussion back and forth, initially, there was a lot of discussion about mandates and precedent, precedent in, not, not in a discretionary way, but in a mandatory way, like, like, you know, the, the law doesn't allow or the law. Like, you know, the, the law doesn't allow or the law requires. And I haven't heard any of those arguments that have. Run true to me. I, I understand that they were arguments, but they, I, I didn't, I wasn't persuaded by. So the, a part of me says I wish that it were because then it wouldn't be up to us. The law would require one way or another, but it is, in my opinion, it is clearly up to the city council. To decide what to do on, on the gates. The law doesn't force us one way or another. It, it also seems clear that, that interestingly, it seems like expectations. Were fairly clear on both sides, not to each other, which seems, seemed odd. To me, it still does. It seems like those, the, the development side felt clearly that they had the mandate and the right to do it. And those who run the council, et cetera, are clear that it was. And, 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 and so I think that's why people are saying if we could go back in time, we would do things differently. I think that's true. We would communicate it and get it resolved and figured out that way. Now, if that means that Summit Creek never occurs, that I, that, no, I don't think anyone can speak to. Steve, Steve mentioned that he thought it wouldn't have, but, you know, hindsight, right? So here we are now with clear expectations on either side. We've got not just government level development, but also the citizen level. We've got citizens that reside in Summit Creek that have a very strong desire to have the, the gates there. And I, and I understand why. Most of you know I walk that road three times a week. And so I'm seeing regularly the, the track. It's about a twenty-five minute walk from the top to the bottom, and so I see a lot of cars go by going down. And I will say, here again, I, I was not, I didn't have a radar gun. With me, but my observations were that people did go slower when the gates were closed. So there is a bit of a safety concern there for those living on Summit Creek Drive.
Paul, can I ask a question? I'm just curious. Did you notice a difference in amount of traffic? You may not have, so.
No, I, I mean, it certainly doesn't. Maybe I just didn't notice that. I, I did notice that. I know I did see though, when the gates were closed, I probably saw five or six times people come up. At the bottom and turn around. Some of them, I think it was just one or two times, they waited enough time for the gates to open and they just didn't. That was early on. They got that. Most of it, they would come and they would just turn around and go. Now, I don't know if that was because they weren't supposed to be there, or if they felt like, oh, we can't get through this way. I couldn't tell, but that did happen quite often.
But, but like you're. But you're making the point that, or. We don't know whether they left or whether just came into the city a different way, route.
So. The, the other safe concern is a big, that is safety of citizens who need to take and quit to the hospital. And I, I also understand that if, if I'm up in Thousand Oaks, for example, and I have a medical emergency. I can certainly just go Woodland Hills Drive, assuming that it'll be faster because Summit Creek might stop me. I might not even be able to get through. That being said, it still needs longer treatment. If I'm heading to the hospital, in fact, we had an incident with my now sixteen-year-old son. When he was six months old, I was doing eighty miles an hour at eleven two hundred to get him to the hospital before he died on us. So. It happens. And, and if I had run into a gate, we could have lost it easily. So it's not hypothetical. Though it's remote, it's not hypothetical. I think it's a real possibility that that could be an issue with somebody. And then, boy, once that's done, that's done. So that is a concern on the safety side for me.
Can I interrupt again? Sorry. Well, I would also just like to say that. You can make those decisions, but often when you're panicked. You're not thinking clearly, yeah.
Muscle memory?
Yeah. So anyway, go ahead.
The other thing I would say is. I agree with Dennis that. And it seems like everyone's confirmed this, that nobody, nobody allows gates on public roads. I think the proposal though is, it would be to make it private. Is what they're suggesting is to make it a private road and then gates could be on it. I would be opposed to making it private. I, I think there's enough expectation. Again, I wasn't on the council, but everything I've heard. Indicates that people did have an expectation before the developers made those decisions, that there would be a road there, they'd been waiting for it. And, and so I, I, I think it's, I don't think it's a, it's a fair assessment to say that. Summit Creek is there only because of the development. I think it happened because of the development, but it sounds to me like there was an expectation, there was a hope, there was. Things in the works to get that done. And there was clearly an expectation by those who reside above and around that area that they would have. Other than Woodland Hills Drive. So again, expectations on both sides, but I'm actually persuaded that that was an expectation and, and I don't think it was just a development issue. I think that's all I can add.
Do you want the last? Bob, do you have comments?
I do. I also am very appreciative of our. Very strong partners in Summit Creek and I appreciate Ben, Bucky and Steve's comments. I think that as I look at this and to, to be honest with you, I have been all over the map. On this, this topic, I've been initially, I was, before I was on the council, I was very opposed. As I have listened. And probably the same conversation that Doral talked about, Summit Creek. Residents who bought with an expectation of gated community. I, I was very moved by that and. I. That wasn't the only reason, but I changed my mind for a while. And. Then I was for and then I was opposed and again, I've just been all over it. And I liked the comments that Paul, our. Attorney, not, not a city attorney, but a, an attorney. That happens to be on the council. I, I, I. Look for and appreciate the wisdom that he provides based upon his. His chosen profession. He, he not, he's not an attorney in this area, but, but there, there's some background there and some fundamentals that, that. I heavily rely on and I really liked. Comment that he made tonight about that the, the law really provides a lot of leniency in this. If I understood and translating it correctly, a lot of leniency on this topic. And it's really a decision up to the, to the city council. Doral mentioned that I created the spreadsheet. Many of you that know me very well know that I like to play with numbers. And because of the things that I've said in, in previously. I believe that this is a very subjective decision that we have to make. If it was black and white, it would be easy, but because there's a lot of subjectivity, a lot of emotion here. I, I like to try to quantify that a little bit. However, even that is subjective. And so I created this spreadsheet. I took notes on. Emails. Phone calls. Discussions, public hearings. And even tonight, I, I added to my spreadsheet another five. Comments and, and I think that every person that has commented, I have. Gleaned something from and put on my spreadsheet and, and I basically. Have a scale from a negative five, which is close, leave the gates open to a positive five, which is. Have them functional. And. It's, it's a very, it's a very close call and I end up with a negative four. Again, that's subjective, but it helps me to, to see where I'm going. I, I really enjoyed Steve's comment, Steve Dicker's comment when he talks about that in the past, we were very informal. And now we're a lot more formal. I think that's part of the maturity and growth of our city. And so I think that's a very positive thing. When we bought here. We looked at other locations to, to, to buy our property and to build. And one of the options we looked at long and hard was Hubble Creek Canyon. But it only has one exit. And the more we thought about that and our station in life, we felt that it was. Important to have more than one exit. And so. The, the multiple exits played a big part in, in our choice to, to, to move to and build in. In Woodland Hills.
Bob?
And so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm interrupting you. I, because I have a question. Back up to where you said you come up with a negative four, what does that mean?
That means that. I'm in favor of having the gates left open.
Okay, all right, thanks. Go ahead. Sorry.
And so, so I, I, the, the, the comments that I have to make right now, I'm going to speak to all of us as adults. I don't want to. Be offensive to anyone. Because I respect all of the comments that have been made and I. I have come to the conclusion that this decision is not a decision between. The residents of Summit Creek and the city of Woodland Hills. I believe it is a decision between the residents of Summit Creek and the developers of Summit Creek. I don't think that the city of Woodland Hills. Really has a role to play in, in this discussion. And. So for all of these reasons, I, I've come to the, to the resting point. That I think I'm going to have to vote as much as it is a very hard decision, I'm going to have to vote to leave the gates open.
Thanks, Bob. Dave, I think you're the only one.
I'll try and keep, I'll try and keep this short. So. I was on the planning commission when the Mountain Villa overlay zone was passed, which was passed at the request. Of Don Meacham so that Summit Creek could be a unique development. It was what allowed the, the zoning the way it was. It's a very unique zoning in all of Woodland Hills. As part of that zoning, one of the important clauses, which was agreed to by Don Meacham at the time. Was that there could be. Gates slash monuments with the gates welded open. And I think that that's, for me, that was very important. We actually did have that discussion well before the gates were put in. Now, I don't know what happened between the planning commission and the city council. And I would just remind everybody that that was a tumultuous time, not only for our city because of the death of our mayor. But also for Summit Creek because they also experienced kind of a, a leadership change at that same time. So there's a lot of cloudiness, a lot of fuzziness, and I don't want to try to explain it. But I will say that the Summit Creek Drive was not just Summit Creek's dream. That was Woodland Hills' dream and the mayor, all the way back to Toby Harding, had been working on getting that road put in. And it was really only through the efforts of Mayor Lordson, and I know I'm repeating some things that others have said, but I want to make it, do it for emphasis. It was only through the efforts of Mayor Lordson that that road was able to be built at all. Because without him doing the hard negotiating with some terrific families. That were willing to give up their property, that we were able to get that road built. And when I say we, I say it in a sense of Summit Creek Development and the city of Woodland Hills. Getting that road built. It was a we. Having said that, the other thing I want to do is I would just want to use this as an opportunity. I've received several emails. Some of them have been very well-written, well-reasoned and. And kind. And they gave their reasoning, but they were kind. I will also say that I've received some emails that. Assume that because we're even talking about this, that we're all evil and we should all be sent to hell. Because we're even having the conversation. And I would like to just ask our citizenry. To not be afraid of the conversation. We need to have these hard discussions and we need to do it in a civil way because that's what a community does. It's what a family does. It's what people do. And just because we may happen to be on different sides. It doesn't make anybody evil and I, and I just want to emphasize that. There are no demons here. We are having a, a tough conversation. We want to get it as right as we possibly can. But let's, let's not demonize people just because we have the conversation. I think that's unfair to everyone involved. The last thing I want to say is. We've talked a lot about the past. We've even talked about the present. I want to talk about the future. So. If I were to make that same vote today that I made on the planning commission almost ten years ago. I would do it. And the vote would be to not have gates on public roads. Especially this public road because of how critical it is to our city. It is, as has been stated, one of two main arteries out of the city. Now, I will also say I very strongly care about the people in Summit Creek. Some of those. People are, are good friends. And I want to make sure that we do address the safety issues. I think that's incumbent upon us as, as a council to make sure that we're representing them as well. So I want to address the safety issues, but if I'm looking to the future. I'm asking myself the question, twenty-five years from now. Would there be a gate on that road when it's all built out? When we now have a lot of homes, both in Summit Creek and. The buildout of the rest of Woodland Hills, would we have a gate there? Would we have a gate when people are trying to come to and from eleven two hundred south, which will have a light there? Will we have a gate? And to me, the answer would be no. There would be no way that we could handle the traffic with a gate that opens and closes. At that point, it just wouldn't work. So for me, it's really about the future and I hope everyone will kind of embrace the future and look to the future. And as hard as this decision is, I, I hope we all also do it in a very civil way.
Mayor, can I make?
Yeah, Paul. It's okay.
Here, here, David, on all of you, especially on the civility issue. I know exactly which emails you're talking about and I completely. Great, Doral, I mean, I'm sure Bob and Carrie are shaking your head, yes, we all know. The arguments that people make are much stronger when they're civil. They just are. When people get emotional. For, for me, the logic starts to fall apart. It, if you stay civil, those arguments have more strength. That's my personal opinion on it. I also wholeheartedly agree that. We need to, we need to, regardless of the decision we make today, or if it's not today, whenever we get. We do need to spend some time thinking about safety on Summit Creek. Like I said, I, I walked that and I did notice a difference and I do see cars flying down that hill at times. And, and, and so that's something that I think it was. Michelle, I think, mentioned that maybe, maybe we look at twenty-five miles an hour on Woodland Hills Drive. I would certainly like to have that conversation and see where.
On Summit Creek Drive?
I'm sorry, on Summit Creek.
Okay, just, just clarify.
Yeah. You know, do, do we? Do we do other things? Do we, do we look at possibly making private roads on the other roads up in that development, not Summit Creek Drive? I would certainly like to have that discussion. To me, anything is on the table to, to talk about. Not making any decisions, but to discuss the safety of the citizens that live in Summit Creek Drive. I think that needs to be a discussion that we pick up. Regardless of the decision we make today.
make today. And then the last thing I would say, and I should have said this the first time, and I had it in my notes and I just skipped over it. But like everybody else has said, I just want to make sure that my voice is joined with everybody else's in saying how much we do appreciate the developers of Summit Creek. They are good to work with. They're honest, good people. They've made a wonderful development up there for the whole city to enjoy, giving us access to wonderful trails and whatnot. It's a wonderful development run by wonderful people. And so I just wanted to add my voice to that.
All right. Anybody else want to add anything to that discussion, council? To this discussion, rather? Okay, let's move on and talk about the 2021 Road Project Budget Summary Options. Would that happen?
Corbett, but I think Ted's on.
Ted? Do you have?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, could you help us with this?
Sure, yeah. I think this is kind of a follow-up on an email survey that went around to the council. This was kind of a follow-up to discussion in the council last time about funding, looking at doing Skylake as part of the road project that we're working on now, and how that affects the road bonds, and how that would affect the potential for being able to put some road bonds towards West Loafer. So we reached out to a, well, first we had the city engineers work on putting kind of just a preliminary design together on what it would take to do West Loafer. We then reached out to a contractor who's working in the city right now and asked them to put together a price to do the project if they were to build it. So they gave us basically a price that would cost to do West Loafer. And then we used that along with the price from Geneva to do Skylake and put together various options for the council to review on how to approach spending the road bond funds. And then I got the road bond numbers from the city. And if I can share my screen, I can talk through that real quick. If you want me to just talk through the numbers, I know this has all been sent to you in a spreadsheet. It's been updated just a little bit. I got some final numbers from the Geneva for doing Skylake. The numbers I included initially were estimates. They're actually just slightly lower than what I had estimated.
Dave has a question.
So the question I have is, when did Skylake become part of the conversation?
Two weeks ago. When Kerry brought it up.
When I was.
When you were out of town.
Dying of 50-mile hike. By the way, there were no paved roads there, so.
Whose fault was that?
It was a choice. But could we just, before we get into the rest of the numbers, which Ted, I can't thank you enough for doing this, could we just revisit that part of the discussion again? Because.
I will tell you why I brought it up. Part of it was I had been getting quite a few comments and phone calls from people on Skylake because the road is so bad. And they said, you know, gosh, we're already coming to the top. We're already repaving all the way to the top of Skylake, Broad Hollow, and we're repaving all the way to the end of Skylake. This isn't, we're not talking all of Skylake. We're only talking about that section between Spring and Broad Hollow at this point. And so there's quite a lot of damage on that road. And so we were talking about the idea of how we could save money because we already have the contractor there, we already have the equipment there. And so the price to do that at the same time would be a significant difference for us. And we probably wouldn't have that opportunity again to have it done this cheaply. And so that was the discussion at the time. There are some, I don't know if you've been over there lately, especially the upper portion has significant road damage that we have never, ever, since the beginning of the city being built, ever done anything on Skylake.
Right, and there's a reason for that because it's, I don't know how to say this, it's almost an illegal road because of the steepness of it. It's just horribly dangerous.
Well, whether it's illegal or not, it was approved and platted, and those properties were platted, and we've approved building on those properties. And the ones that we thought for some time, whether it was, whether it was real or not, that they said some of those are seasonal, that's not the case on the plat. And so it is because the city approved those plats, it's our responsibility to maintain that road.
So Dave?
So Kerry, are you, right now it's not a through road? And we're not making it a through road, right?
No, we're not making it a through road. We're just wanting to pave from the top of Broad Hollow down to that Hammerhead, and from the bottom up to that last property on that side. There would still be the spot in the middle.
Okay.
Which we have to plow, both sides, we currently have to plow, and we do. So we might as well make it safe on our own city vehicles and our own workers, as well as our residents who have been very patiently navigating that road. As, like I said, it's never been fixed.
And everybody on the council. Well, yes. Who? First of all, that's a.
Yes.
But.
Dear, we're having a difficult time hearing you.
Pardon?
We're having a difficult time hearing you.
If I'm closer, do you hear me? Or is it my mic? Okay. So the email from Byron Adams, everybody saw that. And I think he was a little confused about it being a through street or not, but I just want to make sure you all read his comments because they were well-thought-out and.
Well, and again, I have not checked the individual lots, the plats, as they were platted, but it was always my understanding, because of the steepness of that road, that it was only accessible during the summer. So the fact that we're plowing it, well, we're not plowing it, I mean.
Yes, we are.
Well, no, we're not. I'm sledding it in the wind.
Okay.
So should I add something, Eric, since I plow? I can get firsthand information there. We plow from Broad Hollow down to the Hammerhead. We plow coming up to pass the driveways, the existing driveways. I can tell you that the International cannot plow either one of those. Well, they could probably plow the lower end, but the upper end, they can't because there's not room to turn around. Even though there's a Hammerhead there, it's unsafe for that. Coming up, it takes extra effort on that lower part just to get past the driveways. You have to have a running start if there's very much snow. And oftentimes, the only way to do it is to back up so that you've got the salt spreading first, that gives you a little bit of traction. And so I asked a lot of questions about this last week, the last time then we talked about it. I've pondered a lot about it. I think that we do definitely need to do the upper portion. I don't think there's, in my mind, there's any question that that needs to be done. It's horrible, it's unsafe for the citizens, and it's unsafe when you've got a snowplow full of salt coming down that hill and the blade is bouncing and causing damage and just making it harder to drive. Coming up, I would only repave as little as I possibly could because of the steepness. I don't know if we have an obligation to pave and maintain that road, but history is that we've maintained it from a snowplow standpoint. And so, you know, I have no interest in paving or doing anything in the middle section. Like Dave says, it's just too steep, it's not safe. And so I think we need to proceed with caution.
I also think with that, Bob, is that we have been approving people to build. And so we have people who have built all the way to the Hammerhead, and now we have someone building above the Adams. And so although we have historically only paved where those driveways, you know, just past their driveways, there are now homes being built above those two homes. And I do think that part of the safety issue is figuring out what we're going to do with them, you know? That might be a discussion with the Public Works Director over snowplowing, or with Paul, who's over snowplowing, but that home is currently being built. And it goes farther up the hill. So I am still in favor of paving both ends because of the safety issues.
I mean.
I think just because, just because we allow someone to build those, it means that we have to plow the road. Many cities in the United States don't get their roads plowed very often at all, if ever. And we are totally unique.
Right. Snow-packed all year.
Well, I can tell you, my kids would love it if we put a rope toe in there, but I don't think a snow, I seriously don't think a road. I mean, even under the best of circumstances, if we were able to plow that, it still wouldn't be safe. It's just too steep.
So we're saying that it's safe enough for a citizen to build their home and drive themselves, but it's not safe enough for us to maintain the road at all, whether.
That's not, that is absolutely not what I'm saying, Kerry.
Well, but we should.
What I'm saying is, I had no idea that we were putting, that we were allowing people to build there with any assumption other than that was only a summer home.
Well, it is on the plat, it doesn't say it's a summer home. There are lots, just like anywhere else. And I think that whether we snowplow or not, maybe not the issue on that southern part, I mean, on the lower part, maybe we do have to have an agreement with that. They have to plow down to where, on their own, where that comes. But I still think it's imperative that we at least have a paved road for them to be able to access their own home.
So I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. So we're not, we're still not, Kerry, you're not talking about making it a through road. We're not talking about, we're just talking about moving the pavement up far enough to access that last property.
Yes.
Because I'm looking at a map and then.
I think it goes clear to the Hammerhead both sides. There are just lots there that we, as a city, issued as buildable.
Yeah, so either we go through the process of condemning those lots, or we've approved them as buildable lots.
Well, and just to, you know, for public record, those were approved, my goodness, more than 20 years ago. Because for 20 years, those have been non-buildable lots.
And councils in years past have all wanted to dissolve those lots along the portions that are dangerous to get to, but it's never been done. And people are buying the lots and they're selling them again, and they're, you know, traded hands, several of them traded hands several times, with the understanding every time they sell, that you can build here. And I think the question is, is do we need to provide a paved road for every lot in the city? And after listening to Byron's comments and reading them, he's got a point. You don't need to build a road in that area if we wanted to spend our money somewhere else.
Well, I think too, that he might be under the impression that we wanted to put it all the way through, which has never been the case. It was just paving from the bottom of Spring up, because he's going to have a neighbor on top of, he's going to have a neighbor just to the, well, it would be to the south of him, but up the hill from him. And I don't know if he realizes that lot has been, that lot has been approved for a home.
I would like to ask Ted a question.
David, the proposals to do 350 feet up from the bottom.
Say that again?
Proposals to go up 350 feet from the bottom.
So. What mics? Where are we getting?
I think you've got your mic on your computer. You need to mute yourself.
They're both muted.
Oh, is it this mic? Causing trouble? Okay, there. Okay, Jody, once again. Just talk and we'll repeat what you say. Well, so the proposal would be, so the proposal right now that we're talking about is to make that road go up 350 feet, Skylake, from Spring. And then the homeowners, as they build their homes, would be required to put in a Hammerhead, turn around there to come back down.
That works.
Okay, so, and again, I mean, worked with some of the residents there, I know that some are coming down Broad Hollow up to Spring, even though we have a chain there.
Oh.
And we have foot signs there, we have.
Chained it.
We've chained it. We've, I mean, we've done everything but a Jersey barrier, which we don't want to do. Again, it's an emergency outlet, so I get that they're using non-emergency uses. So when it was said, going to put in asphalt all the way from where Spring meets, all the way up to Broad Hollow, I'm just like.
No.
No, not over there.
That was never discussed.
Okay, well, I'm just reading Ted's notes here, pave Skylake between Broad Hollow and Spring. So that's where I get that from.
That's option one.
That's option one. Option two is worse. It says from Broad Hollow only, and I don't even know what that means.
From the top down.
It's the top and down to the Hammerhead, I would assume.
Right.
Yeah, and this was, Dave, this was based off the discussion, and probably it may have been helped to hear the whole discussion. The discussion was at the time that we were never going to pave all of Skylake, only the section between Spring and Broad Hollow that is currently paved, and not pave anything that's not paved, was the discussion. So when I said between Spring and Broad Hollow, I was meaning the pieces that are paved, kind of based on our discussion, but not the rest of Skylake goes down around the hill.
Okay, that helps a lot.
So Ted, because of the steepness of this, are there indications that if the road would not be, I don't know, durable? Is there some cautionary things that we need to be looking at when we look at even the portions that we're proposing to be paved?
So, yeah, that section that's not paved now is too steep. That wouldn't be a legal road. I mean, that one, obviously you guys are aware, it can't be paved, it really shouldn't be paved. The one thing the contractor did mention when we talked about paving Skylake, and we're talking from Broad Hollow down to the Hammerhead, and then from Spring up to about 354 feet, is that he said those roads are really steep, and there's probably going to be some pavement washboarding, just because their equipment, that's so steep on their equipment, that it's tough for them to get a really smooth profile. So it'll be a lot like if you, there's about 800 feet on though, that they've paved, that's really steep. Duro probably knows where that's at, and if you drove that, it's just. Um, Doral probably knows where that's at. And if you drove that, it's just a little bit bumpy on the new pavement. And that's why, cause it's just too steep for their equipment to really get a really smooth profile. So Skylake will probably be the same. Um, it'll be a little bumpy, but other than that, um, you, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot of issues with, with the pavement they're doing now. Um, you know, it's a pretty poor up road. It's, it's.
I got a good education from Ted about why it feels ripply when you're driving down lower oak in this, in the steepest section. It's just because of the weight of the machine as it's laying out asphalt. It, it has some issues. And so we will see, I would expect to see some rippling on the steep parts of any area of our city that we choose to repave. So uh, I mean, it's a lot better by hundredfold than it was, but, but those machines have issues on the steep road. Uh, and they'll have.
It seems like to me, if we do not put rock line ditches and culverts along that area, we're asking for trouble. Is that correct?
Um, and yeah, and that's probably just about anywhere in the city. Um, I, I drove around Saturday and Sunday during those rainstorms, I was driving around the city. I know Doral was out in them too, and I was watching big washes get washed. Even in areas where we have, just for example, right across the street from my house. Um, I've got a huge drainage channel that's been cut in by just rain going down the other side of mine. And it always undercuts the, even the curb we've got there. It'll undercut that curb and I know the city's been up a couple of times to fill that in. Um, because the snowplows have been concerned about running off over there in those huge drainage ditches that get formed by the water, rainwater. So, you know, the, and, and so rock line ditches, yes, you, we, I mean, those should really be in, in most areas of the city. We haven't helped protect the edges of the roads, um, so they don't get undermining under the pavement. And culverts, the same thing. Um, down there by the city. I was watching during the rainstorm, um, in fact, I was down there with Doral and fire chief and went down sandbagged a resident's house. Because all the water comes right to that intersection and heads right down to his house. Um, and I mean, we really, I mean, that, that scenario really probably should have a culvert. So I mean, yeah, yeah, I guess the, the answer is, Bob, yes, rock line ditches and culverts really should be in, in all of our streets to help from undermining our pavements and our curves and stuff like that. So adding those in would, would certainly benefit the road. But I think the intent, at least what we gave the contractor so far was just to get the pavement fixed.
Okay, we are moving way along in time. So any more comments or questions about that so that we, you guys can make a decision tonight? Do you, everybody feel comfortable with what they?
So maybe if I could, maybe just one quick thing that may affect your decision.
Okay.
So based on, I, I assume this was a ratification of an email that went out last week. Um, so the section of Skylake between Broad Hollow and Hammerhead has been pulverized.
Okay.
So if that, if that helps with your decision.
Well, and, and Ted, can you remind us of the price that we're given? I think it was like a dollar sixty per square foot or something like that, that was going to be a significant savings on our part. Because the equipment is already in that area.
Yeah. So what, what they, they actually, in my estimate that I sent you guys in those spreadsheets, I, I put in a dollar sixty square foot. Cause that was I, their highest price they'd given us on any of our streets. And I wanted to be conservative. They actually got back to me last Friday with a formal number and it was a dollar fifty. So it's 10 cents cheaper than I estimated. Um, so the number went down just a little bit.
Okay, so to answer the liability question, as I understand it, uh, doing the, the portion of paving that we've outlined does not increase nor increase the city's liability. Cause we're just paving what's already been paved. Is that?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
Um, Jody said that Diana Second had her hand raised. Was that your question, Diana?
No, I'm talking about the lower, uh, the 350 feet. We've talked about adding new pavement. What's the slope and what's acceptable and what is not? Because already school buses can't come up Skylake. And if a school bus can't, I know a lot of vehicles can't. I'm just trying to understand what the percentage of slope we're, we're talking about. And what we're deeming is a safe incline.
Ted, do you have an answer for us on that?
Well, so with this project, we're not changing the slope at all, right? We're just pulverizing what's there and repaving. So it won't change the grade or the profile of the street at all, just puts new pavement on it.
And we're not paving it any further than it's already paved.
Correct. Yeah. And I don't, we're not paving any further than it's been paved and, and probably not quite as far as it's paved right now. But just up past those houses, I think 350 feet, and I'm not sure where that ends, but that was kind of the dimension we gave them.
Okay.
So it doesn't change, other than putting pavement down, it doesn't change slopes or grades or anything on the street, what they're doing.
All right. You guys ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. The next item is the Four Seasons Platte, final plat approval. Jody? Oh, okay, Wayne. Wayne's going to join us back in the, in here, just a sec.
You can hear the boots.
I don't know if I'm supposed to be here, Ted. It's in this, but it's a, it's in addition to Four Seasons. It's um, I think there's 21 lots in it all. They uh, run along Summit Creek Drive. Uh, he's designed it so most of the lot entrances are on cul-de-sacs. They're not on Summit Creek. There's only three lots that will come out on Summit Creek. And he's, he's put in his um, CCNRs that any lots that are frontage on Summit Creek have to have a turnaround. So yeah, on their property. So they pull out frontwards and not back on the Summit Creek Drive for a safety standpoint. But uh, LAI has looking at, has looked at it, spent a lot of time on the plat. Um, planning commission has as well. Um, we didn't see any issues with, with it as we um, looked at it, reviewed it and approved it. And are feel comfortable and recommending it to the city council for, for approval.
Wayne, this is Carrie. So has, has, have there been any adjustments since we last saw this? I remember us talking about Summit Creek Drive and the cul-de-sacs of, and remember us talking about the turnarounds. Um, have there been any other additions to the actual document that, from when we last reviewed it?
When he first presented this in a preliminary plat, there were four lots further to the north that were adjacent to what is plat D now. He's separated those off and will include those in a future presentation. There's some issues with, with those lots. One of them is there's a fault line that goes through part of that property that he was not aware of initially. And so he's broken that off and they're doing some more work on that. But that's the only change that they've, that he's made to the original presentation.
Thank you.
Um, is this the area where there's a street named Autumn Circle?
Yes. No, it's, that's already in place.
Okay.
It's Autumn Blaze. So there is a bit, it is different. We, when he first presented that, the city did have a discussion because we have a similar named street in the city.
Right.
Autumn Leaf.
Okay.
And we felt, everybody felt, including I think the people who live on Autumn Leaf, that there was enough of a, a distinction there.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So uh, he's named a number of the cul-de-sacs, oh, after kids, of his, his kids' names.
Oh, that's great.
Down there too, so.
Okay, so um, the only significant change is that four lots have been removed.
Yes.
From this plat. Okay. All right, any other questions or?
So the biggest question I have, and I've already sent this to Wayne, is again, I'm really wanting to make Summit Creek Drive uh, as multi-use as we possibly can. Now, I understand that this is just on the east side of Summit Creek Drive. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no.
So along Summit Creek Drive, does it have any kind of sidewalk?
It does.
Anything?
What? The sidewalk is on one side. Um, and that's not the side that's, I think that, that's why I'm. Um, there is a sidewalk on the, on the other side of this development. It's only on one side of the street, but he does have a sidewalk uh, along Summit Creek Drive.
So um, and again, because this is a different development. So I'm glad that we have the sidewalk on one side, but that actually concerns me. Because this is a much denser development, so you're likely to have people walking along the street. Which we have that today too, uh, in the rest of Woodland Hills. And I'm just concerned from a safety perspective, do we feel like we need to have sidewalk on both sides? Um, should we have a separated bike lane on one side? I mean, what, what's the vision there?
Um, we're comfortable with it, the way it, uh, the way it is. Um, to add a bike lane would be problematic at this point. The bike lane will likely be the walking lane as well. It's a five-foot path, wide path that goes up the side. Um, and it'll, it'll go into the, the cul-de-sacs as well, not on, not on this side, but the other side. Uh, it will go into the cul-de-sacs as well. So it will be a continuous um, sidewalk that transits that plat D. That's what I'm, I'm thinking, the sidewalk is on the other side of plat D.
And I don't think it is. Yeah.
Right.
I think it's on the side of the church.
On the east side, east and north, yeah.
If, if on the same side as the church, you're correct, Dave.
And so is the, is the sidewalk supposed to be um, in play of a trail? I thought we were requesting a trail in those developments. Um, and also because I, I think there are right. Multi-use, so the sidewalk would be multi-use, walking, trail slash bike lane, all in one. I do think a lot of people in that area, because it is higher density, will probably want to walk to church and walk to some of those other areas. So I think it's a legitimate concern.
Yeah, my, I, I just want to reiterate that what we were 20 years ago when I moved in, we are not today. And not only are we not, but Payson isn't, Elk Ridge isn't, Salem isn't. I mean, they're all building these bike trails to, and they're connecting them. And so the thought that we can be like our own independent city and not connect to any of this is probably not accurate. So that's why I'm so concerned about this. And when Robert brought up original Four Seasons plat, I kind of made a big stink about it. And said, this isn't following our general plan. And to his point, we had not moved those general plan pieces into the, the development construction standards. So that's what I keep saying, we've got to either decide, okay, we're just, forget it, we won't do that. Or we need to put those in our development construction standards so that we're clear with these developers on what we expect. And when it comes to Summit Creek Drive, looping around Woodland Hills Drive, it's getting too dangerous for a bike. And I just feel like that's something that we could fix now, even if we end up doing it piecemeal. That would be better than trying to not do it or waiting or saying it's too late. Believe me, it's not too late right now. It will be too late in five years from now.
So what do you propose we do? What, what should we do tonight?
So I, um, tonight, I would, I would like to delay this and say, okay, what? How, I'd like to address these pedestrian bike issues before we move forward. I guess that's what I'm saying.
The. I guess one possible answer would be to put a bike trail on the other side of Summit Creek. Put walking trail on one, bike trail on the other side. That may be something to consider. But again, it's needing to change our, our development construction standards to show the, the layout of, of those streets then to accommodate that.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm fine with that. I, I think that's, that's fine. Again, whether, we don't necessarily need, again, the, the general plan does have them separated by some amount of dirt. Or, you know, lawn or whatever, you know, it's green space between the road and where the bike would go. I'm open to changing that idea, but what I, what I really feel like we need to do is at least keep the vision that we had back when we did the general plan. And by the way, this was not just in this latest general plan, it was in the previous general plan too. That we would have bike trails up and down Woodland Hills Drive.
So, so I.
Yes, Woodland Hills Drive on our collector roads.
Carrie?
Yeah, so I mean, I know on Woodland Hills Drive, it makes it harder because we don't have a trail easement on that portion. Uh, and it would take a little bit of effort and probably funding for us to be able to buy those easements. But going back to this section on Summit Creek Drive, um, have we, do we have anything in place that requires a trail? We've talked about it as part of the general pan, plan, and, and Wayne just said, maybe we could put a trail on the opposite side. But is, are we too late to do that because we've already done preliminary plans? Or because it's not in existing code to do that, that it's just a suggestion rather than um, something that's mandated as part of the development? Because I just want to know where we stand on the possibility of asking, if we can't now, if it's just the sidewalk, what is the possibility of asking for that on the undeveloped portions? May, maybe the opposite side, but can we actually do that?
I'm not sure. We, I'd have to look at that further and see what uh, um, our road section shows as far as uh, it seems like there is an area on the opposite side of the road that could accommodate that in our cross-section of our road and our development construction standards. Uh, if we wanted to do that, I'd have to look at that again and, and see.
I think it would be worthy for us to, to look into that. And if it's not in there, that we go through the proper uh, procedures to have that in place for all future development.
So I think what you're saying, and, and I know what Dave said already, referred to uh, updating our development and construction standards so that they follow our general plan. So what would be the best way to do that? Do, do we start with the planning commission? To update.
Think so.
So Wayne, would you be willing to look at that?
Sure.
Because that is, I mean, we're going to have this discussion over and over and over every time unless we get that fixed. So.
Well, and again, the, the time to do this is now because they already have a bike path that comes on 11200 to this point.
Right.
So if we don't connect now, we never will. So we really ought to at least evaluate it, address it. And again, I hate to hold Robert up. I'm not trying to hold Robert up. And in fact, this may be the kind of thing where we could vote the next meeting to approve it.
Well, and that's.
As long as we have better answers on what are you going to do on this other side of the road? And how are you going to address pedestrian traffic on both sides? Since we're building more dense housing, how are we going to address people who want to walk to church?
So, so my question. So, so my question to Jody is, what is that going to do to Robert if we postpone this vote for another two weeks? Oh, just a sec. Bob, did you have something?
Yes, I, this is the same topic that we, discussion that we had when we reviewed the preliminary. And we as a city didn't do anything then. And now, I, I looked online, and I'm not sure exactly if I got the numbers correctly, but Robert has sold the vast majority of the lots that he has that, that we've approved the, the platting for. And I think that that shame on us for not doing what we should have done after the preliminary was talked and this same discussion occurred. I think that it would be inappropriate to put that burden on Robert Nelson when it really should be our burden.
I feel the same way that, that we don't, I don't feel comfortable delaying what the planning commission has approved because we don't have our ducks lined up about how the road should be built and, and, and walkways. I, we're, we're doing it in the wrong order. We need to get those finalized and given to you so you know how to approve a plan or not. What you did do is approve that plan based on our current rules that our city is governed by. And I don't think we can say delay, delay, because now we want to change the, the official. You know, that's the way I feel about it. I, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm sorry, but let's do things in the right order.
I think that we need to ask the city council member that has responsibility for the planning commercial, the planning commission, to make sure that this gets on their agenda and that they come with a plan forward with us and on how we are going to deal with, with bike trails.
Okay, Bob, that's me, and you know it's me. And I have done that, and I have talked to Wayne about this. And for whatever reason, it has not gotten done. But at the same time, that's why I'm bringing it up here yet again. Is so that that can be addressed. It needs to be addressed.
I, I, I believe that Wayne is responsive to our request. And I would defer to him as to why it hasn't happened. But I do not think that we need to put the burden on Robert Nelson. And I was just saying it the way, the other, the other way because I didn't want to, I wanted to be polite in the discussion.
Okay, Wayne, did you have?
Robert has always been very accommodating to the city in, in his plans and, and wanting to work, work things out. So I, I, I don't have any, I wouldn't have any reservations about him wanting to do what, if we put some additional guidelines in place, or even possibly without them, for his future plans to, to work with us as we go forward with, with making, with considering changes to our, our development and construction standards for, for the roads. I don't know what holding that, holding this up will will accomplish. Other than maybe making a point. But I don't think that with Robert, I don't think that's a necessary.
So, so in our, in the preliminary discussion, when we talked about this, or maybe it was in, in the planning commission, Robert said, you change your ordinances, your construction, and I will do it. So he, he's willing to do it, but he, he needs to know what it is that we're asking him to do.
Yeah. I, Wayne. Wayne, I have an additional question on that. So if we approve this, this evening with the sidewalk in place, and then we go through the procedures of putting that into our, our development and standards, then would the trail in the new section connect with this sidewalk in the, in this current section? Or would it be just a piecemeal with places that are not really connected?
Well, there's really no development on the west side of Summit Creek yet, from 11-200 all the way up to the gate. And so, that.
A couple houses being built.
Well, there is one, yes, down below, closer. Yeah. But it, I don't know about, I don't think it'd be piecemeal. There may be a couple other homes that we would need to be brought into that, but for the large part, there's no, no other development along there. So this could, this could go all the way up to the gate and possibly further up, and then come down to almost 11-200.
All right. And that, so if we approve that tonight, we can still go forward with that idea on the west side? Possibly.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Possibly.
Any other questions or concerns before we move on? Thanks, Wayne. We really appreciate all your
Sure.
efforts and energies on this. Okay, the next item is security cameras.
I don't really have an update.
Okay.
And I guess, I'll, I'll just say it this way. We have a bid. We've asked that it be approved. I don't have any reason to give additional information. I don't have any additional questions that have been asked. So I'm just waiting for us to make a vote and either approve it or not.
Okay. Any other questions?
My recollection, my recollection is, is that we approved up to $50,000 already. And we added, I think it was 20,000 so that we could cover the possibility of the software being able to be more proactive and identifying and communicating to us. Is, is that still an option?
I think so.
And, and I was, I was under the impression that that 50,000 also made sure that we were looking at both fire and and water, that we were, we were looking at making sure both, both of those entities, those, you know, vital, vital city issues were taken care of so that Craig and Corbett both felt that their, their areas of expertise were being, and being secure, and that they had access to those cameras and that there were. So we didn't have to buy into another system. We talked about this last time as well, David, about the idea that we don't want two separate systems. We want one system, but that it can cover both fire and water.
Yeah, but I think the additional money that was allocated was allocated for software, not for hardware.
But that's my recollection. And, and as I understand it, it's, we, we have a, a standing approval to spend up to $50,000 on camera. And so I think that what, whatever you're ready to do, Dave, is that, you know, let, let's, let's move forward with it. And, and I think that and I would encourage you to do that. I, I believe that you have the authority to go do it.
Yep.
I felt, I felt the same way, that we had approved the 50,000, but that we were going to make sure that, that both Craig and Corbett were involved in the discussion of placement and et cetera.
Okay. All right, then let's move on. The next thing is amending the city schedule, consolidated fee schedule for garbage and recycling. And that is in response to an increase we are going to see from Waste Management to us. We're, I'm still wrestling with those prices with between Waste Management and Jody and Chris and I trying to come up with the best combination, I guess. Or the best formula.
As the city council member in the Waste Management, there has been no additional fees that Waste Management is levying upon our, our hauler of trash and recycler. So these, these increases are totally theirs. And so the question is, is do we, do we just eat them? I mean, do we just approve it? Or do we go look for somebody else that's maybe has a better rate?
What do you mean, Bob? Are they raising their fees X amount for recycling? I, I did.
The, the the, the solid waste district is not changing their fees. They have not changed them.
Okay, so he's saying the solid waste district hasn't raised their fees. Waste Management, who's our pickup company, is raising fees in the middle. And so we have to decide, do we want to go look for somebody that can give us cheaper rates, or do we just want to?
They may just be justified. I, I don't know what, what, what their justification is, but you know, we do know that fuel costs is their hot, costs are higher and, and those types of things. And, and so, you know, I think that we should challenge them. I think we should ask them why, why they're doing it. And at the same time, it might be just interesting to see what some of the other providers can do.
Bob.
I agree. Do we know why they're increasing? Have they told us? And, and if so, if it's, if it's just gas prices, I mean, yeah, that's a significant difference, but it's just our city.
To switch providers, which I don't disagree with you, Bob. I think investigating and all that would be awesome. But I don't, I mean, when are these increases going to take place?
Bob, I just got an email this past week from Blake Leonelli, who's our Waste Management rep, reaching out to Chris and I to meet with us. So let's see if, if we can get you into that loop and just go meet with him and get together with him. And then, and then what Jody and I are, and me driving this mostly, I would like to simplify our ga, our gas, our garbage rates. So that it's just a simpler formula for first can, second can, recycling cans. And so we're trying to look at what other cities are charging so that we're kind of in line with it. We, we don't want to have outrageous garbage prices, but we also want to make sure we're covering our administrative costs here in the city. And so Bob, we'll get together with Blake Leonelli, and then I'll still work with Jody and Chris. And my suggestion is that we can just table this till our next meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think these are all good suggestions. And, and another reason why they maybe be raising the rate is, is we know that labor costs have gone up. You know, they, they probably no longer have the, the, the minimum wage, what it, what it is legally. It is probably up to around $12 or whatever, $15 now. And so there, there's a lot of valid reasons why they may do it. I think we just need to understand the why.
Okay.
I agree.
These, these rate increases from Waste Management went into effect on August 1st. So they'll impact us this month, one way or the other.
So, so Mayor, can, when you have that meeting, can be, in addition to the why are they going up, can you find out if this is a company-wide? Or is this just specific to Woodland Hills? And if it's a, if it's a percentage increase, or just a dollar increase over, overall, because that way, I think that makes a difference too. If they're collecting garbage in other areas but not increasing the fee, I would like to know.
It's a percentage increase and it's, and it's area-wide. It's not just Woodland Hills.
Okay.
I do know that. Okay. Moving on, we will go to the number six, Proposed Ordinance Amending City Code Title 10-2-1. Definitions, amending the definition of finished grade and natural grade, and adding a definition for finished grade points and national, natural grade. And we took public comment and had quite a robust discussion at our last meeting. So any further discussion that you want to have tonight?
None here.
Nope.
Carrie?
No.
Okay. Dave?
No.
Okay.
I read the robust discussion. It was awesome.
All right. All right, then the next item is the Proposed Ordinance Amending City Code Title 10-11-8B. Parenthesis five, sports courts. Also took public comment at our last meeting and had a good discussion on this. Is there any further questions or discussion that you want to have tonight before we move forward? Okay. Yes, Wayne? Wayne is looking at the wording on Craig's computer.
I'd like to insert accessory in front of the building. It's about midway through that paragraph.
This is, this is the sports court?
Yes.
Okay.
Clear, my, doesn't, it could emphasize that it's accessory building that we're talking about here. Regular.
So it would be wherever an accessory building could be built, a sports court could be built?
Correct.
That essentially what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's referenced in that, but, but, but accessory in front of the building name on that, on the wording of the statute, that would be.
Okay. Does that make sense to?
Did we skip, did we skip? Okay, we talked about number six. This is number seven on our agenda.
Yes.
Okay, just the sports court, similar to the report that Wayne gave us last time, just changing it so that it would be considered the same as accessory building rather than a home.
So this would say, all parts of a sport court, including fences, shall be located within the area of a lot where an accessory building may be constructed.
Okay. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on that?
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Is there anywhere in this ordinance?
This is Sherry Berger.
Yeah, thanks. Is there anywhere in the ordinance that it mentions anything about lighting on a sports court?
That's handled in a separate ordinance, I would imagine.
It should be handled in our lighting ordinance and, because we don't want to.
Which also kind of needs to be.
Which needs to be. Yes.
But is it, is it a sports court only if it's fenced in?
Sherry, for your information, the state passed new, a new statute having to do with building requirements. And the city can no longer require particular design for lighting. So the restrictions that we've been able to have in the past, if there were any, we, we can't put restrictions on, on lighting any longer.
Even if it inhibits? Even if it inhibits the safety of traffic?
On the volume of light that it puts out. Yes, but not the design of the, of the, the light, the structure.
How about placement? I mean, I'm seeing sports courts lights go up. And when I come out of Wendy's Road, if that light is on, it shines right in my eyes while I'm driving. Can we have something that has to do with where those lights are placed, that they don't inhibit the safety of the citizens while driving?
Or the direction.
Likely, we could do that.
I understand the part about lumens. Mine just really had to do with safety at nighttime because that's when lights are put on, on sports courts.
They have to follow. I'm surprised you got a sports court close to the street that way because they have, they have a setback requirement. It's the same as a house.
Well, it's far back. It's on Eagles Nest.
And it, and it blinds you at night?
It does when I come out of
If you're coming off homes.
Mayor's Road to turn left on Eagles Nest, yes.
I think it's from Roden.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's something we need to look into.
Thank you.
All right. So all right, we'll move on to council reports. Doral, CWPP, Public Safety, Arcs, Racks and Trails.
Thank you. I have a little bit about each of them. I'm interested in the, the mayor's and the council's input as we approach fall, the opinions of chipping with bins. I'd like to know what you're feeling. I'd like to know what your feelings are about buying the bins like we did one year, renting the bins for, for brush collection, um, for this fall. I just, that, that's a future question. Um, we, we, we might want to consider that. The second thing.
I, did you want our opinion right now about it?
Would like opinions, but.
Well, um, I think our citizens really appreciated that. But I, if I remember correctly, we were having people throw other things in the bin besides.
We had a very successful.
No, yeah, no, we had a really very successful. People were very good about.
Okay, maybe it was just, maybe it was just our, our paper products at Christmas. I just knew, so I guess as long as we make sure that they, they put the bins exactly how it is and that they're not an increased fire danger, I think it really helps our citizens to have that.
It costs a little bit of money and we probably, I don't know if we use grant funds for that or not, but.
How, how does that benefit us as compared to the roadside?
Um, it is much safer in the fall to not have piles laying around. A bin, our chief has had them just come and pick them up if we had some worry and it's immediately removed. So that was a real advantage in the fall, chipping. The spring's different. But, um, but I just thought it was very worth the cost. And it was very well used by citizens throughout the city. And just to consider it again.
I think if we're very clear on the fact that they can't be contaminated, people were very good to. As long as they understood the expectations, they were really good.
Okay, so I'm getting the impression that we might, can, might look to doing that again, with the chief's advice. The second thing is you saw a copy of the form we built. I, Bob, thank you for, for reading that and responding back to me. That form is to get a firm commitment of interest by some property owners to clear from their property using grant funds. And so we want to go around and, and visit with these particular, the prime candidates for, for taking some of this money and, and, and clearing some of the brush out. Uh, we're looking at areas in the city that, that will benefit the whole city by, by taking part in that. So if you saw the form, I wanted to share, uh, chief, I sent that to everyone so they could at least get an idea of what we were looking at.
Doral, you're just, you're just talking about, um, property that doesn't currently have a home, right? Those.
Any.
Those, oh, any of them.
Any properties in Woodland Hills. We think we're going to focus on those you say, Carrie, but, uh, but, um, we, uh, we just want to have some official thing that we can give to a resident who, who might want to participate in this.
All right. The other question I have, I have, I have a resident who contacted me about, uh, about the idea that I guess Spanish, and they, maybe they contacted all of us, I don't know. But the idea that if Spanish Fork has, um, you know, a resident who has downed trees or excess grass that's a fire hazard, Spanish Fork can just come in and clean it up and bill the property owner. And they were wondering why we didn't do something similar. And I don't, I didn't know what to say to that, um, per se. I have a call into Spanish Fork to ask them how they do that because it seems to me that's private property and you, you would need permission to go into that. So have you discussed that with your CWPP group and public safety?
Not to my knowledge.
So Carrie, I, um, there definitely is the issue of, you know, personal property rights that you're bringing up. Um, but I was actually going to ask Doral, have we ever gone on to private property and cleared brush either as a grant or, or just as a city? And, and under what circumstances have we done that?
Uh, we've done, we've done, we've had the state fire crews in here. I've gotten them to go on some people's lots. And it's, the, the property owners agreed to it and had a snare release.
Okay, so in other words, the only time that we've been able to do that is when we have some kind of special resources that come our way. But it's pretty rare. And, and so I guess, you know, I'm not discounting the secure, uh, the private property issue that you're bringing up, Carrie. I think that's a valid issue too. I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, I think the reason we haven't done it is we don't have the resources.
Right.
We don't have bodies to actually go and do that.
And we have nice, in fact, nicer than we need to, even with, with our areas along roadways that the city owns, actually. Uh, we've tried to remove trees that some residents just rejected our, our choices of marking trees. So we've been very lenient on the other side over the years, in my opinion, of, of not being meanies, you know, going in and going after brush that, but.
It was a little, it was a little difficult to hear Craig, but did he say that when we have gone on private property to clear, we have had permission from those?
That's right.
Those individuals?
Yes.
And so what you're saying now is.
Permission and having estate resources.
Right. This, yeah, the combination of the two. So now what you're saying is this form would be a firm commitment from property owners to allow us, if we have the resources available, to go on their property and clear, um, dead debris.
Correct. And it's a super program where we would pay half, which is incredible.
Yeah.
So as I, as I read the form, and I thought the form was really good, I understood it as that they were applying for this grant money, but the, the submittal of the form does not guarantee them approval. And that
Right idea.
Fire chief and, and Doral will evaluate that against the, the appropriate con, uh, criteria that they've identified. And people may or may not be approved.
That's totally correct, Bob.
Thank you.
Collect some good information as to how interested people are, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I, I love your form and I think it's a great idea.
So I, I read the form. I thought the form was fine. The questions that I had were just, um, about kind of operationally. Although one thing I loved about it was the fact that you'd already more or less contacted some companies and you've got those companies willing to come do it for, for.
For a fee.
For a fee.
Right.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, I wanted to give them some choices.
Now.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Can I ask about the other magic question that goes along with this? What about the non-compliant folks?
That's a whole, that's a whole different issue. What we, what we want to do is identify in the city our priorities. Use this form to find the compliant ones and handle them first. Spend our grant money and, and then, and then go to the next step. We've never been very good or definitive on how to handle the non-compliance. Uh, frankly, our citizens have done better over the years, every year, as far as wanting to be compliant. So they're, they've generated over the years, a very different attitude where it's really changed from years ago when we tried to do this. So.
Well, and I think that was the question that came to me, Doral, was, was if Spanish Fork can do it without an issue, why can't we? And I, I just haven't been able to get in touch with them on, on what their policy and procedure is for the non-compliant.
We can, we can get mean if we want to, but I don't want to. But, but yeah, you can s- s- set fines and times and more fines and so on. So that's what Spanish is going to tell you, I would predict.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
Let's go forward and see if our citizens will continue to push us on the other side. Let, let's make this a safer community.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so thank you. It sounds like we've got the approval, Craig, if we want to approach and use the form. I do want to say, we didn't want to, the chief asked me, should we mail it to every property? And let them, let them take a bite of this? And, and we just don't feel like we have the grant funds to handle, you know, that many, that many on, on the get-go here. So let's, let's try something and see if we can, we can attack the worrisome areas of the city.
It seems to me that, that we could, um, focus on those, those that are empty properties or, you know, that don't have construction, those maybe of, that in our community that are elderly and have a more difficult time, or even the widows. I think if we focused on those who, who really could use the help, then your, your, um, approval rating, you know, on, on whatever the grant money is, you would be able to, to, um, you know, look at those a little bit more concise and not have to really throw a lot of people out based on, on that they just don't want to do it.
So Craig just also said that we are using some of that, those grant funds to clear city property. So just wanted to add that because I don't think that got on, got miked.
And there are some heavy fuel areas in the city that have his priority, which, which are important. Uh, next issue.
Yes.
You know, private city has an ordinance that on lock clearance, it has to do with redevailing more than anything because it's a good city. But they send a notice to, uh, a property owner, gives them 30, 60 days to clean their lot. And if they don't, then they're notified that the city will go in and clean it and they'll be billed for that. So there's a way, I think, to accommodate that if, if we choose to go that route.
That, that's correct. Thank you, Wayne. That's, that's true.
Doral, I have something more.
Yeah.
So there is a citizen that has been in contact, um, with me and some others that's really interested in this issue and is willing to help, um, put volunteer hours into developing language that we can look at, forms, processes, et cetera. So I'll talk to you about it afterwards.
Yeah, excellent. Okay. It's a, it's an important enough issue in our city. Um, the third item I want to mention is, uh, Craig and I at Val visited a, a Summit County fire station this morning and it was perfect. They had both trucks that we have bids for, two different companies. And the two trucks were sitting there and we got to talk to the fire chief and firefighters who use these two trucks, one built by Rosenbauer, one built by Pierce. And it was a valuable morning for us to get feedback directly from the people that have used these machines for, for a couple of years now. And so we saw the exact, almost the exact truck that we would, we are proposing through the finance committee, you know, to, to bring to the council for approval. And, and just learned great information from these people that, uh, fire departments are just excellent in the state, sharing with each other their experiences about companies, good or bad. So, so that was a real valuable thing. And we have another meeting tomorrow, um, uh, to go into more detail with one of this from one of the vendors. And so I just wanted you to be aware of that, that we are making progress on, on getting a, a truck that's just perfect for our city. Um, I want the council to know that the fire department sold two old gurneys that we had bought in previous years that we no longer need. And we made money on the sale a little bit, not a lot. But here we, we used these gurneys for a few years and we sold them. When the grant bought us a new gurney, uh, we, we sold these off. And so, uh, the, the city has received the funds for those and it's back in our, our fire budget. So just wanted you to be aware of that. The last thing I'll just mention is, uh, we have been fortunate in our city to not have any serious flooding issues. We did assist.
Miraculous.
It is, it is. When you see the, the rainfall we've had, uh, we did participate in, uh, calls down in Salem where basements were full. I mean, just, uh, terrible situations. So, so just a thank you to our fire department and, uh, and the, and the energy we have to, uh, to, to go and, and respond to things like this.
This is almost trivial to bring up, but were we able to get the street sweeper fixed so that we could kind of clean those up?
I think Craig, you've worked on the street sweeper. Craig worked on the street sweeper, has done some work and get it. So, so the, yeah, we have an employee that's been sweeping the streets. Um, he didn't do it over the weekend, but he was working on it again today. I'm just repeating Craig's.
Yeah. Can, can we have Craig or whoever speaks come to the mic? It's really hard.
Craig, can you come up to the mic when you talk? Cause they can't hear you at all.
You know, we didn't used to have mics.
So anyway, Zach, Zach and Mike have been doing the sweeping and the filling on the sides of the roads. So the big ruts that it's been making, we've been trying to put some new road base in there. So it's, I think we're out of the woods for a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it, to, to be honest, it is an issue for those that walk the streets. Um, but again, I compare what our roads were like compared to like some of the areas of Salem that I was driving around and our roads held up pretty darn well compared to what Salem was dealing with. So.
Yeah, they did. I mean, we wouldn't have the issue if we weren't in the middle of the water project. I mean, we, we have issues, but not, it wouldn't be like it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll just try to start focusing on some of those areas.
Well, thank you.
You got it, I'll pass it on.
Okay.
Mike, my last comment is just be grateful for the volunteers in the city that are on your fire department. These guys that we talked to today, the fire chief says he can't get volunteers anymore. He's hired, in fact, he's up to 40 full timers now. But he, he did pay his volunteers $50 an hour for calls and $30 an hour for training. And boy, we would go broke doing that with all of the hours our guys are spending. So just be aware, uh, times are, uh, times are changing potentially, but as of right now, our city's in good shape, thanks to our chief and our, our guys that, that report to him. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, awesome. We have an awesome city with a lot of people willing to put in a lot of time and effort in lots of different areas, serving us, and we are grateful. I mean, the planning commission, you know, you, those groups also. But our fire people and our EMS people have, are spectacular, they really are. All right, thanks, Doral. Um, Paul, Public Works Roads and Animal Shelter.
Not a lot to add. I mean, Public Works.
I had something.
About it regularly, so it's not like there's any update. Um, animal shelter, there's still that, that issue with the Utah Animal Rights Coalition that's, um, visiting various city council meetings. Um, we haven't had that invitation yet, but I'm assuming it'll happen. I'm trying to find, Provo had them at their city council meeting about two weeks, just over two weeks ago. I'm trying to find a report on what happened. I can't. So maybe that's a good sign, civil. But that's still an issue that's just being looked at and investigated.
Well, and just to keep it in perspective, I mean, Provo delivers al- almost 100 animals a month there. And Woodland Hills is like one every other month or something like that. So it's, it's a different order of magnitude problem for them.
Absolutely. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay. And we, okay, let's see, um, Carrie, Utah Lake and Emergency Management.
Well, first of all, I didn't get a chance to unmute myself during Doral's comments, but, uh, I wanted to let you know that the county got in touch with me, that they're doing a Utah County First Responder of the Year Award and Dinner. And, um, I was going to be calling Craig, so Craig, you, uh, be thinking about this, but they want to, um, acknowledge an astounding member of our volunteer fire department. And so I will call you for that name so I can submit that to the county. Second of all, uh, Utah Lake, of course, uh, we're meeting again, uh, next week or the week after. And, uh, we've had our share of the elements, uh, here and there, but the lake has been, uh, there's some, some other good things that are happening. Uh, the, the life jacket, uh, project is going well. They've gotten a lot of life jackets and they feel like that saves lives. So we're continuing with that. As far as emergency management, um, we've been working with the county and going to lots of meetings, going to trainings. Craig and I have been on the phone a lot during this, uh, flooding period. And, uh, we had water in the basin. Yes, we had some water in the streets, but relatively speaking, compared to our neighbors, we, we fared well. As a county, um, we were asked to, um, help out. As a county, we were asked to help out with both Moab and Cedar City. And so all of the cities that had extra sandbags or could provide sandbags. Vineyard City transported twenty five thousand to Moab and twenty five thousand front to Cedar City on behalf of Utah County. So if they need some other things, I reached out to their emergency manager in both cities to see if there was anything our little city could do to help. But the overall help from our county from each city was really appreciated. So we're trying to stay up on top of it. And I'm I'm really happy to say that we didn't receive any significant damage from flooding or debris flow.
I think it's important to note that the National Weather Service has been particularly sensitive and responsive, and they've been in contact with Craig through all of these weather systems. And I we really appreciate them and what they've been doing and.
Definitely. It it's really been helpful to have those warnings prior.
All right, Bob, the dispatch and solid waste and Woodland Hills Day.
Uh, no updates since last time on nine one one or solid waste. I kind of talked a little bit about that with this background. Woodland Hills Days, we have a co-chair couple, which is the Christiansons, Vish and Mary Ann. And we have the Luntz, Brad and Larkin are are the Lakin are the coach or the co-chairs for that. And so we've had.
Tell me again, who? No.
The Christiansons and the Luntz.
So Janet and Dan?
No. Janet, Brad and Lakin.
Okay.
They live on Lofer, right across the street from the park. They just built a home.
Great, okay.
And so we've talked and basically developed some some ideas and that. I have basically turned it over to them with some reporting that I would like them to provide for us. And so we'll get that. And I would encourage the council and everybody to be supportive of them because this is a really big, uncomfortable task that a lot of people don't want anything to do with. And they will probably, I'm pretty sure that they're going to be recommending some new and different things. And and I encourage that. And so we'll see what's what they have there. Volunteer projects. We have the ongoing landscaping effort at the city park, I mean, at the city offices. Craig and Mike have been working on getting the the base ready for the to do some some hydro seeding of grass right there next to the to the building. Well, we should have a group of young men come by, I think it is Friday or Saturday, and rake that out in preparation for topsoil to be brought in. And then we will have another group of young men come in and do the rake out of that. And then we can get the the hydro seeding done. And so we'll we'll see where where that all goes. And we hope to be able to get the landscaping done probably in September sometime. The split rail fence around the park and part of the mitigation worth the the materials of that have have been delayed. I think that they're the last word I got is that they'll probably be delivered middle to end of this month. And hopefully we can get that done before Woodland Hills Days on the the eleventh, tenth and eleventh of September. So that'll be in place. And we also have a a person that has volunteered to help with recruiting people to do these various projects. Aries Brog has a has a has a volunteer do that. We've worked on that and and he's out getting the people. And I think he'll probably be working with with Carrie on communications and that type of thing. But he's he's there willing and able to to get us going on. Right people with the right skills, with the right tools to help us with the various projects. And that's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Bob. All right, the last one is Dave. Well, with what Public Works Water.
Yeah, Public Works, it's pretty much same report as Paul. We canceled our meeting for this month, but we have a lot of work going on, so that's good. Finance Committee, we have not met the past two months, so no real report there.
Okay, and I have S C S D, but our meeting is next week, so I don't have anything to report yet this month. For number nine upcoming agendas or other information, I actually, there are a couple of things I have and then any of you that have information. Number one, LEI met with our city staff and Wayne this week and basically tendered their resignation as our city engineers. They feel like they don't have the expertise and or manpower to do the job that we need at this point. So we are at this point, the plan is that we will I think we will use, they gave us a couple of recommendations, and one of them was for Jones and DeMille. And Jones and DeMille has been working with, we've worked with them quite a bit in the last couple of years on the mitigation efforts and now the water project. And they have been really invaluable to us as a city. So I think at this point, our plan is to kind of go with them. I don't know if we need to formally adopt them as a city engineer unless we anticipate that we're going to use them for, I think it's more than fifty thousand dollars in a in a year. And I don't think that we think that's going to happen. So we can formally adopt them as our city engineer. We can just use them ad hoc, project by project. We'll I I'm open to that discussion if if you want to do that in the future. Yeah, Dave.
So the the, I mean, the big question I have over that is, again, is it going to be more than fifty thousand? Doesn't need to go out to bid? But the other thing is, because we've been using Jones and DeMille as, you know, kind of project by project, is there any difference when we have them? I don't know how to say this, on retainer or as our city engineer and how we might interact with them. And I mean, I just don't know what that even looks like. So it's hard for me to even say, yeah, let's go.
Whether we should do it or not.
I mean, I know what I know what working with Ted is like, but I would imagine that he's not going to be the one we work with
Yeah.
on like when we need ordinance changes and things like that.
Well, and I would suggest that he not probably be our guy there because he's kind of our yeah, and he's kind of our citizen that, you know, and we don't want to put him in a weird position that way. But I don't know, Ted, can you give some input to to
I want him very.
Dave's question about how it might look, if it would look different than what we're doing now and how that could, how that could be?
Yeah, so there's a couple of ways. And we we do this with other cities, right? You do I would say sort of their city engineering. And there there's a couple of ways this done that we we typically interact with communities that we do a lot of the engineering for. And one of those is we just do it on a case by case basis as needed. The other way that we we sometimes handle is we do what we call a general services agreement, which is basically just a contract that puts us under kind of a general services agreement. And then as individual needs come up, we give the the cities, here's, you know, here's our effort. And when I say effort, scope and a cost to do or satisfy this need. And then it's done under the general services agreement. So it's not a contract every time we have a need. It's it's just give us a cost when we have this need. And then other occasions, it's just kind of on a on a as needed. If it's needed to attend a meeting or something like that, then then we'll just say, you know, it's cost an hour of someone's time. And and we do have and and Mayor, I think you stated right. I I always am interested in helping the communities I live in and and will always have some sort of interest in seeing what goes on in the city, helping where I can, providing what engineering I can. But but we would probably, if this were the case, we would provide the expert that's needed for the service, if that makes sense. So if it's a code review, we would have one of our planners do it. If it's a structural need, we'd have our structural engineer do it. If it's just a general civil need, uh, you know, I've got it. We've we've got another engineer. So in other words, I would probably just make the assignments on a case by case basis, depending on the need and what expert we need to do that assignment. But those are a couple of ways we've done it. We've just done them generally through, the most common way we do this is for through general services agreement. We're doing it on some respect with Springville right now, and we do it for Richfield and some of these cities. And then that way is it's it's something we can do under that agreement, just provide a cost and a fee. And then if you think, well, that's that's, then you know upfront what it's going to take to do it. I think it's a benefit to both you and the city.
I I think that the general service agreement, GSA, is probably the easiest way because then we deal with fewer contracts or whatever that was tied.
Right.
Uh, things that may need to be done. I'm wondering if there isn't some legacy data files or whatever that LEI has that that a GSA would facilitate then in transferring over to Jones and DeMille so that they would have some of that history as they they work on different projects. And so I I I am in favor of exploring the GSA.
One thing that's really nice about doing the contract also is, especially if the engineer is invited to executive session meetings, to get some of the protections of confidentiality clauses protects them and protects us. And so that a contract would be nice to have.
Yeah.
Yep.
Keeps our contracts lady off my back too, because she gets mad when I don't wear contracts.
So so Ted, can you get us a copy of a GSA and let us put that on our next agenda?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get you a copy. And I would suggest you you review it and and we're open to, you know, making changes to the GSA. So it meets the needs of both both entities in there. Yeah, and I think that's the best way. Then we'll, whenever there's an engineering need, we just provide you kind of a cost to you upfront, what it is. If you feel like it's not fair, you can always talk to us, negotiate, stuff like that. That's how we handle most of them.
And 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 Mayor, just so you know, just so people don't think it's just because we really appreciate Ted and all he does for us. I did reach out to several other smaller cities to ask their opinions and if they had in house, if they contracted out and Jones and DeMille was highly recommended by a lot of a lot of the smaller cities without knowledge that we do have Ted living in our midst. So I thought that was a good endorsement, even without our knowledge of Ted and his skills.
That is true.
Appreciate it, Carrie. Yeah, we, and I say, I've been at Jones in the eight years and we've, they've built their company on services, rural communities, smaller communities is how they've built their services. So really cater to needs like this. So yeah, appreciate it. We can get you one over.
Okay. The other thing is, um, just, I just want you to know what's going on in my brain. And I have been thinking a lot about having kind of a slogan or a theme or catchphrase for the city, you know. One of the things Dave brought up a few meetings ago is that we need to define who we are. And I would love to do some more kind of research on that and, you know, citizen surveys and, you know, kind of, but just what's come out of my little brain is a like a three part statement that would say uh, Woodland Hills cares, Woodland Hills serves, Woodland Hills strong. And the cares, Woodland Hills cares kind of area would mean we care about nature, we care about our community, we care, you know, that kind of thing, care about safety. The Woodland Hills serves basically was is our interaction, our interface with people. That, you know, we serve other cities, we serve each other, we serve our city. And then Woodland Hills strong, we're strong. We together, it's kind of a unity statement. So that's kind of, and I thought it would be really neat to have, you know, some banners made that we could hang. And then, you know, when when things come up, citizens have concerns and things about the city, we can kind of go back to this, you know, kind of mission statement, except it's simple and easy. Anyway, so that's just kind of, I I've been toying around with that. I'm looking, I'm happy to have input. We could make it much bigger citywide collection of, you know, input from people. We can just kind of get started because this is pretty simple. We could do it, you know, without a lot of, we could just start here and then we could alter it or change it later. So anyway, I just want you to know that's kind of what's been going through my mind. I've been think, I've been pondering on this for a long time, just thinking it'd be kind of nice for us to have kind of a slogan, kind of that that kind of a thing. So anyway, just.
And Wendy, I I appreciate the simplicity. I think that's exactly what we need, something that is cheap, but also at the same time says who we are, but without a long paragraph, because nobody remembers those kind of mission statements, those kind of vision statements. You need something that's just short. And I appreciate.
The, this has been something that that we've been working on a little bit. And I think I really appreciate you bringing up, Mayor. But but the Trails, the Park Committee, they have talked to me about in some of the projects I'm working with them about whether or not we needed to update our logo and and that type of thing. And and they have some people that will probably can do that as pro bono type stuff. And so I I think that would be also important to to look at.
Okay.
I think last time we updated it, we had a citywide contest because we have quite a few graphic artists who live in our city. And I think that might be something that could unite people by having a contest and have some people voting, et cetera. I don't know.
I think that's a great idea. Could, I mean, we, if if we wanted to move quickly and we felt like we could, I mean, like I said, this is pretty simple. So we could roll it out and then we could alter it or change it. But if we wanted to, Bob, we could try and incorporate this into Woodland Hills Days this year. But that might be too quick. So just think about it. And I can talk to you. And I wanted you guys all know what was going on in my little brain, so.
Mayor, can I ask a question before you motion to adjourn that perhaps the agenda changed? I know there's several members of the Parks Trails Recreation Committee that are on the Zoom meeting. Was the Parks Trails Recreation update postponed or tabled?
Oh, Doral, that was under Doral's.
I'm not aware of something changing, Sherry, on the on the agenda.
Well, the agenda said that there was to be a PTR update.
That's, yeah, that was under Doral's report.
We hadn't met since our last meeting, Sherry, so I hadn't maybe I hadn't reported well enough on the last meeting we held. There's there's still a dark sky interest. There is a survey. Is it going to be sent out? If not, it it will soon, that will collect interest on the switchback trail items with that. Anything else I missed, Sherry?
The survey will go out. We're trying to determine how to get that in the new the newsletter or the what is it? The not the com, the transparency report? I'm not quite sure when that comes out. So we can, we have the survey ready to go. And the committee has sent their recommendation to the council on what our findings were, which is what we were asked to do as well as on deep forest circle parking issues. uh, which is what we were asked to do as well as on deep forest circle parking issues. Uh, I think the only other outstanding thing was the maintenance that needs to be done on the water bars and the marking of them up on the trail. We're just not quite sure how to proceed with that as to whether or not the geo fence is going to be fixed. And does it require heavy equipment to go up there that would ruin our efforts in doing the maintenance on the water bars?
Uh, maybe Craig can um, talk to you about that. The, the uh, person who was over that install was going to be meeting with Craig. Craig, do, are you still there? And can you give us an update on how that meeting went? But you need to come to the mic. Thanks.
Is that better?
That is much better. Thank you.
So, so Ted and I did go up at par, uh, looked at geo fans. He's supposed to be giving us a quote on what it would take to re-stretch the cables. But it doesn't look that significant. Uh, worst case scenario is we could re-stretch them ourselves and get it up. He thinks that the weight just came down on top of it. Instead of filling it up from the bottom like a debris fence would do. So it just, it come down and it just pulled the cables apart. They, they seemed to hold in the ground. So, but Ted was up there with me, so he should be getting a quote to see what they would charge us to do it. And then we'll decide if we want to do it ourselves. But everything else up there looked great. And then no, no campfire sign was still there. So that's a plus.
Yeah.
Craig, will that require heavy equipment to go up?
What was that?
Will that require heavy equipment to go up to stretch the cables?
Um, no. No, we think we could carry enough stuff to, to do it. And so did he. It's not going to require a tractor or anything. So he won't have to rebuild the water bars. That's what you're.
Am I?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. To do the maintenance on him now and then have heavy equipment ruin the maintenance that we did. We, we just weren't quite sure how to proceed.
If, if anything goes up there, we can just fix it coming down.
Okay.
Yeah, but he didn't seem, he wasn't talking about tractor getting up there, just some cable winches come alongs. So we can do all that on side by sides and four wheelers.
And my understanding is that in general, the water bars are in pretty decent shape.
Water bars are in great shape.
Yeah.
Uh, they seem to be conveying water.
Yeah.
And, you know, each year, if we just, if somebody does go up, they could probably just scratch out the bottom of it just to, just to make sure it gets off the trail. But I think, I think they're going to hold just fine.
Yeah, they look good.
You know, we went up, it was a little wet and it didn't, it didn't tear into them, so.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sherry, for your efforts. Will you convey back to the committee that we appreciate everything?
I will. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, um, so we will close our works. Oh, does anybody else have something they wanted to bring up during this period? Sorry. I kind of hijacked the. All right, we will close our work session. It is eight forty-five. Let's uh, convene our meeting at eight fifty. Five minutes, is that long enough? Ray, how about you? Okay. Welcome back. We're convening our official city council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills. It is Tuesday, August third, and it um, is just after eight, well, just about eight fifty-two. And we have our full council in attendance tonight, and I'm the mayor Wendy Prey. Welcome everyone. Um, I would like to ask um, Paul MacArthur if he would be willing to lead us in the pledge. And Carrie Malkovich, if she would be willing to offer an invocation.
Would everyone please rise? Repeat pledge allegiance of me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day and for all of the opportunities we have to serve and live in our beautiful community. Please bless us this evening that we can take into consideration the wants and needs of all of our citizens, that we can balance it with prudent judgments and with forward thinking to help maintain the best community, the safest community as possible. We're grateful for all of, that thou hast blessed us with. We're grateful for the safety that we have had through these recent downpours and the flooding of other communities. We ask for thy hand in, in those communities that they might have thy assistance and have our assistance as they try to recover. We're grateful for our citizens and their their engagement with our city and, and with us as a council that to help us in making wise decisions with a greater perspective. Um, please bless us this evening as we discuss these things. And as we Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Carrie. All right, and thank you, Paul. Uh, Jody, do we have anybody that signed up for public? Okay. By email, did everybody receive that? I'm able to read it? Okay. All right, who's got their hand raised? Okay, Steve Dicker, you got your two minutes.
Does it count when I start speaking or does it count after I find the button?
I haven't hit the button yet.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so Mayor and City Council, I want to thank you for the, the deliberation that happened uh, ear- earlier in the meeting. I, I would invite you to uh, continue to take a look at taking that road private and still allowing the uh, the access to the uh, to the city of Wood, you know, Woodland Hills, all residents. And I think the other thing that I would, I would like to encourage you to do is, you know, as you're, you uh, the city council and also planning commissioner well aware, we are in the process of uh, getting our master plan put together in the midst of this transition from LEI, and I don't know whether there's anything with LEI and whatever successor firm you decide to choose that we can do to eliminate um, us going backward. You know, we've, we've done this a number of different times and um, seems like every time we, we hit a road bump and, and I would do that. So I think if you can take a look at that, and then also if in fact you decide to uh, choose to have the gates open and choose to have a public road, I would encourage you to immediately start uh, working on something to reduce the speed on Summit Creek Drive, and I don't think stop sign or, or uh, speed limit signs are going to be effective in that route. So there's my two minutes.
Thank you. That was two minutes and a minute, in a minute and a half, so that was well done. Okay, any other hands raised, Jody? Okay, Sherry?
Yeah, my comment is one of gratitude. Um, Jeff and I were out of the country all last week and came home Saturday night to quite a big mess on Deep Forest and down on Eagle's Nest and the city did an amazing job of sweeping our road and it almost looks brand new and we are just very, very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Good job, Craig.
Yep, good job, Craig.
It even broke, the thing even broke down and he, he had to fix the sweeper. It broke down between storms. More baling wire.
Yes. Okay, Brent Bateman?
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Brent Bateman. I'm an attorney with Denton Durham Johnson Penniger and I represent um, the Summit Creek Drive developers. I hate to turn this public comment into, you know, more about that, but I don't anticipate getting another chance to sort of say a final word on behalf of my clients. And, and just two points I want to make. First of all, uh, here, here and amen and thank you during the work session. Uh, it was pointed out by one of the councilmen that the most persuasive way to to discuss and argue is civilly. And I believe that and I, I know that to be true and appreciate the fact that the city has never been anything but that. Um, and so thank you. Uh, the point I want to make is this. Um, you, you know, you're going to decide and probably vote on the gates for Summit Creek Drive. I just want to make the point that this is not a binary vote. This is not gates or no gates. It doesn't have to be that way. Um, it can be, there, there are any number of routes that can be taken, including other things that can be done to um, you know, control traffic. Um, situations like, you know, the gate schedules uh, that we've been trying for the last month, situations like, you know, um, uh, you know, the private road that's, that Steve has suggested a few times. It doesn't have to be uh, this is a gate or no gate situation. The city does have a vested interest here. It's been a long time that those gates have been open. Uh, those gates have been there. The city, you know, uh, and did nothing. The developer just assumed that they were fine. The, the um, residents assumed they were fine. So, you know, continuing to work together without just saying, you know, uh, a yes or no is probably what I would recommend here. Um, the city does have, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thirty seconds.
Okay, I'm just saying, the city does have the right to make this decision tonight. There is no legal impediment there. I'm confident of that. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brent. Okay, any other hands raised, Jody? Okay, we've heard some good public comment tonight. Thank you for those of you that commented. Moving on to the consent agenda, the minutes of the June twenty-second city council meeting. Okay, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from MacArthur. Any other just question or discussion?
Can you have the other council people turn on their mics?
I just did.
Thanks.
Okay. So Dave didn't say anything except that he moved to approve the consent. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes and carries unanimously. Um, the first item on our agenda for business and discussion is the gates on Summit Creek Drive. We'll turn that over to you.
I move that we keep the gates open and non-functional.
Okay.
Bob, would you be open to clarifying also the um, first part of this is gates on public roads? So do you want to add?
Yeah, I, I'll go to the point and saying that the two gates currently built on Summit Creek at the lower end of the development and at the upper end of the development.
I think what do we clarify that we're just don't want, we're, we're just having gates, uh, no gates on public roads?
Yeah, that, that's fine, but I, you know, I just, you know, we were specifically have been discussing Summit Creek. We've already voted on approving functional gates on private roads. And so I just didn't think there was a need to go over that again.
Brent's point was well-taken in the sense that we've got statutes and ordinance is right now, right? We're not asking that any of those be changed, as, as far as I can understand. We're just giving a heads up really to to decree what are we to do in final plat or something like that. I think it's, like, for example, I think it's a good thing to say, look, we're, we're as a council, we're are ready to decide that uh, we are not willing to use our discretion to have open gates on public.
Closed gates?
Closed, thank you. Both gates on public roads.
Yes.
That doesn't require any statutory change, ordinance change, as far as I can tell. It just, it's just our statement. Two weeks from now, if we're all fired and a new council comes in, they could say, well, we do, right? So we're just saying this is our intent as this council, right now, this is our feeling, our intent. And that's really all, we're not asked, being asked to say anything earth-shattering, long-term, anything more than just, this is how we feel.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, I do think that it, it needs to be taken into consideration uh, what some of the residents have, well, a lot of the residents have said, in addition to what Steve said in the public comments a few minutes ago, that we need to immediately start working on a safety plan for that road, uh, so that the speed is, is taken into consideration. And Doral, as someone the person, the council member over um, public safety, I'm hoping that you can give us some sort of a report at our next meeting that will say, what are some possibilities? What are some options that we can you know, vote into place at, at that time, uh, that would help alleviate the fear of, of the speeding and safety issues.
I, I would, I would like to, to take that maybe a little bit further, Carrie, and that is, is that let, let's recommend that uh, the Summit Creek people provide input, maybe even form a little committee to, to make recommendations. This, this is their, their uh, subdivision, their development, uh, they're the ones that live on it and uh, they're, they're the ones that will uh, have probably the, the biggest interests or concerns about how it blends into uh, the character of their community. And so I would love to, to hear their suggestions.
I will work on collecting any input I get from them. I'll communicate directly and and um, and, and, and see if we can come up with some suggestions for the council.
So, sorry, if I can interject again, so maybe it's as far as putting urban say that we are, um, can we move, for example, that, that the gates as of today are open and stay open? Is that, so, some uncertainty to that, right? So we can say, okay, they open, they are open right now, but we're saying that they open and they stay open.
Do you, do you want to specify that they're welded open? Or do you want to just say this to you? Bob? Did you just comment?
Yeah, I, 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 here, here's, here's what I was going to comment on. I will withdraw my proposal. And I would encourage Paul to put forth what he's just said as, as uh, the motion.
Do you want to make a statement regarding just in general, not regarding Summit Creek Drive, but just in general, gates on public roads?
Yeah, so, so maybe there's three parts to the motion. Bob, tell me what you think. Number one is that as of move that, as of now, moving forward, that the gates be open and stay open. Number two, that we're declaring that our intent or our um, desire that um, that gates on public roads always remain open. That we not have closed gates on public roads. And number three, that we invite, maybe, is that the right verb? We invite the, the, the developers of Summit Creek and um, the citizens that live in the Summit Creek development to um, get together to put to, put to us some ideas on safety. I would even be willing to, and I'm sure there are others on the council that would do the same, I'd be willing to meet, to brainstorm um, safety, um, you know, pop, or possible things that the city could do to help on the safety side of things. So maybe that third thing, sorry, I got a little bit weird there. The third thing would be to invite this, the developers and the citizens that live in the development to put together a group to um, uh, put forth some ideas on safety, on Summit Creek Drive, reduction of speed and other safety issues.
I'll say that that motion, Paul?
Hey, Jody, did you get that? It was like a speech. Hey, wait, wait, sorry. Can, Craig, will you run the mic back to her? We want to make sure Carrie and Bob here. Oh, Jody's got one. Since Bob seconded the motion, I want him to hear it.
Council, Arthur made a motion that moving forward, the gates on Summit Creek be opened and remain open. Additionally, it is the desire of the council that gates not be allowed on public roads and that the council and the council invited the residents and developers of Summit Creek to put together a group that will put forth some ideas to ensure the safety on Summit Creek Drive, to ensure safety.
That's awesome.
Said better than I did.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion or questions?
So here's a, here's a discussion. The question was, was asked earlier there, should we say that we want them welded open? Welded open sends some very clear and maybe uh harsh terms as to, to what, where we think about it. And so that's why I didn't include that. But I think we need to make a conscious decision to either include that or to exclude that.
I would propose we not say that in, in that I have huge respect for them always a hundred percent of the time doing exactly what the city has requested of them.
Be punitive. Right?
Right. So are we going back to the motion that Paul made?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm not asking for a change. I just wanted to make sure that we, that we, we have a discussion and make a conscious decision with, with what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Okay.
Can you hold for a minute?
Okay, Wayne has asked us to pause for just a sec. Can you come up, Wayne, can you come up to the mic? Sorry. We'll give you a few more minutes to shuffle your papers, too. Wayne's looking through our ordinances, just a sec.
While he's looking, I can ask stupid questions. Um, what if we all at once had a big movement to want to put a gate on Woodland Hills Drive? And have a completely gated community like we used to have. There's some interest in that, by the way, with, with a few citizens I've talked to. I mean,
Then the council can revisit this issue.
I guess you just start over again and, and, and reverse your decision.
This council or any future council.
Okay. You do start over again, but what I mean by that isn't times change. That's why you have a standing council that's always meeting and making decisions. And then the other thing is, is, you know, people might change their minds, circumstances might change. I mean, but again, what I'd like to see, and I've said this from the very beginning, is I'd like to see any decision we make be one that is unifying rather than dividing.
Yeah.
And I think that
Yeah.
by starting over again, you give that opportunity for a unified decision, which I think is important.
Okay.
The other thing I would say is that we're not doing anything, like any, this motion, if it's approved, would not have to be undone if that were to happen.
Okay.
Because all we're saying is, we're trying to give Summit Creek a heads up as they're putting together the final plot approval. That's the second part of the motion. The first part is, is, is just saying that right now, gates go open. That could change by any council saying, well, that may now determined to be closed. Not like we already did. So I don't think, I don't think any part of it would need to be undone if we did that.
Okay.
Changed.
And, and let me, let me say to Steve Dickert, my opinion on the road as he was suggesting, as suggesting we given, we giving it to Summit Creek or selling it to them or whatever. I would, I would want to tell him, I think the most valuable asset in this city is the fire station and number two is that Summit Creek Drive. It is that big of an important element of our city. Uh, for a lot of reasons. And so I, I can't even consider uh, that option, at least in my own head, um, for, for a lot of good reasons. And so although I, I respect and appreciate any ideas that we can come up with to, to become better citizens with each other and so on. Um, Summit Creek Drive was a huge accomplishment that took so much effort to get built and, 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 and provided for our use. So I, I just, I, I appreciate Steve, you, you thinking of that idea and trying to, to come up with a way to to, to work that. But, but I can't personally um, figure out a way that would, that would be a totally positive thing.
Okay.
The, the ordinance says, gates cannot be closed across a public street, but can be permanently secured open as an entrance feature. So it doesn't say they must be, it says they can be. So, okay.
I just wanted to make Great, thank you, Wayne. That's good, helpful. All right, I have a motion then on the table by uh, MacArthur and a second from Ottley. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so we have um Pratt, MacArthur, Ottley and Malkovich in favor and Kenneth in opposed. The motion passes. Thank you all for your efforts. And, and again, I, as the mayor, would like to express my appreciation to the Summit Creek Development. They have, they are good partners to us and this has been very difficult. And we appreciate all their input and their willingness and they're just, they've been great to work with and we hope we can continue to uh, work well with them. And um, we're sorry that this has been so hard for everybody.
Years. Mayor, can I speak one more little aspect about gates?
Yes.
While we were training Thursday in the fire department, I noticed it's a little bit, I, I'm just saying this for the planning commission to consider putting fire hydrants on this side of the gates. There is a, there's a
On what side?
On, on the outside of a gate. So there's a, there's a fire hydrant down in the, in the end of a cul-de-sac that's gated. And we, those fire hydrants are precious tools when you're fighting a brush fire. And we would not be able to get in and use that hydrant if, if it was in the prime position, you know, for the fire circumstances, we may need to use every and any hydrant that we come across. There's, that is an example where the hydrant, if it was just moved thirty feet this, or maybe fifty feet this way on the other side of the gate, we could get to it easier. Um, just a consideration, I'm not saying that has to be the law, but, but it, it might make a difference if we needed water.
Okay, thank you, Doral.
We can run hoses around a gate, but we can't easily pull a hose.
Get the truck and, yeah.
It's good for the Summit Creek to know too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I mean, safety and help to, health and safety is a big issue for them. Fire's a big deal.
Huge over there.
They're gonna want their home saved.
Yep.
Doral, do, Doral, I'm sorry to interrupt. Doral, do we have any of those today?
You do, you have that, you have that lot that, is it across from Loafer? It's, it's, if you look at that hydrant, it's on the backside of that gate that we couldn't open. Uh, uh, and, and there's, there's just like a lot there, like maybe one or two houses on the end of that little cul-de-sac. It's the shortest cul-de-sac. Yeah, just, just be aware. I love that hydrant. And by the way, we tested those hydrants and they all but one flowed great water. So uh,
Craig says he'll meet with Ben and talk, talk to him about the gate.
Okay, no, that, that, that'd be great, because I want to make sure that it's got uh, I want to make sure that it's got the emergency on it too, so that yeah, you know, that, that gate should open if, you know, if you've got your siren on, so.
Um, I tested that.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. All right, the number two item on the agenda is approval to amend the twenty-twenty-one road projects.
I make a motion that we accept option four on the document sent to us by um Ted.
I second that.
That is the pave Sky Lake option one and West Loafer option three combined.
That's the one that has this coming, even come up with another five thousand dollars or so.
Now, that one's twenty-four thousand.
Oh, that was that one, okay.
Yeah.
Is that the one that paves both the top and the bottom?
Uh.
The three fifty feet from the, the option that paves the three fifty feet from the, from off of Spring and the, to the Hammerhead off of Broad Hollow.
Yes.
Option one covers paving any sections of that road that is already paved.
Yeah, I, I um, I will second that motion to add Sky Lake in from Broad Hollow to the Hammerhead and from the, from Spring, the three fifty feet up.
Four.
Okay. And Loafer.
West Loafer.
Yeah, and West Loafer.
Right, so.
Just a quick comment on that. So a discussion was had that
Is that modifying the initial
And Chris felt like there was a fairly easy way from that twenty-five thousand to bridge the gap. So I just want to do the discussion.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions or discussion on this issue? Okay, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Um, number three, the final plot approval for Four Seasons Plat D.
Move that we, weren't we gonna table that, right? Is that right, Dave?
I move that we approve it. I second that.
Okay. So.
So much for you.
Do you have an actual motion on the table?
No, I just thought that that's what, that was the discussion.
It was suggested.
Yeah, it was suggested.
I, I would like to table it until we have the the sidewalk issue resolved.
I want that too, Dave.
But I think that could be quick. I don't think it, it, I don't think it's a long time. I just think it, it could be quick.
We knew about this a month ago.
And are we saying?
Yeah, we keep putting this up, keep kicking the can. And I'm like, stop kicking the can, let's, let's just do it.
So, so we're saying that, I mean, the planning commission didn't see any problem with this finalizing Plat T. So David's concern is that sidewalk, because we can't request them to do something that isn't in our current um, standard.
Can't require.
Yeah, we can't require that. So David, are you saying that, that we have Wayne go back to, to Robert Nelson and say, by the way, would you consider it? Because it seems to me when we asked him that question, when he came and gave his presentation, he said he'd need to take six feet off of those properties that he's already sold. So I think we're coming back to a different point.
They're, they're, they're different issues. So one issue is the um east side sidewalk, making sure that that is both sufficiently wide and for people to be able to walk down to eleven-two-hundred south. So that's issue one.
Okay.
Issue two is the um uh, bike path on the west side of Summit Creek Drive. Now, the part that Robert Nelson, goodness, when was that, like a year ago or so? When he came and got approval for that um, particular subdivision, said that he could not take six feet off because of those lots already being platted. Well, that's why to me, this is such a big deal now, because he doesn't have any lots platted on the west side of the road yet. He's close, but he's not done. So if we don't do it now, we're basically saying, forget the idea, don't ever do it.
So you're asking us to table it, to table Plat D in
I just want answers.
In hopes, in hopes that he will change something for future Platts, because we're not asking him to change anything for Plat D, correct?
The part for Plat D is I am, I have an open question that I haven't been able to get an answer for on the sidewalk plan for the east side, which is part of Plat D. Once I have that, then I'd be willing to vote on Plat D. But I very strongly would like to have the discussion regarding the west side of Summit Creek Drive, where he's going to be putting forth, has he put forth a preliminary plan for that yet, Wayne?
No.
Okay.
There, there's houses being built on both sides of the road.
All kinds of stuff.
You're right, Bob. There are two houses going in on that west side.
They are, but I think they're in the other, they're in the other um subdivision.
Okay.
The other
They're all in four threes.
And that was my question earlier, and is if uh, if there's already building going on, would this be a piecemeal trail or can we still get something put in on with just Robert's generosity, because we don't have it in statute yet? And then work on that, making it um, part of the design standards.
Yeah, again.
Development standards, I mean.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
As I remember the discussion in the preliminary, we were concerned about the width of the sidewalk uh, that he was gonna put in. Um, and we requested him to increase the size of it, so it was the same size as along the stake center. And so we've already asked him to make that adjustment, uh, which significantly uh, adds uh, harmony to to, to what's there and what's gonna be built. Um, and there is houses built on both sides of that road. Um, up to about the, the curve, I'm, I'm not sure, but, but there's, uh, there's one lot that's not under construction. And I believe there's at least two others that are well under construction. Um, and so, so we, we've got uh, houses on both sides of the road. And um, I, I think it's gonna take longer than what we think it is, because the planning commission has got to put together their, their proposal. They've got to meet on it. They've got to submit it to us, right? And, and so we're, we're looking at least a month. And, and I just don't know that that's fair to Robert Nelson.
So, since we're in the discussion phase, I would say, because Dave, I agree, I think this is the time, so I say that I, I would not vote to approve, okay, so assuming that the planning commission does its work, introduces and gets the general guidelines, whatever they're called, into um, something more statutory ordinance-like within a month, let's say. And then shortly thereafter, let's say, Robert comes to us to get final plot approval on that, that other side. I would vote clearly no on that to give Robert a heads up if it's not then incorporated into a bigger plan for the trails, to your point. So it's like, well, okay, you can get approval on this one, but just give a heads up that you won't get approval on the next one, likely, at least I won't vote for it unless you have that plan done. So you might as well start planning it now. Because if, because if you do something weird on the part we just approved and don't incorporate anything into it, then you come over here, it might be too late. So you might as well incorporate it into the plot that we've even, even though we've approved it, it's in his best interest to, to deal with it on both sides.
I, I do agree.
Well.
If the city vote fast enough to give the planning commission some some reason to just enforcing that.
Well, and I agree that that west side trail system needs to be part of the, going forward. But again, I see it as two separate issues that that I don't think that we can hold him, I would say the word hostage on, on Plat D approval, because we're concerned about a a future plat approval. To me, it's a discussion to have, but at the same time, if that sidewalk has been um, the width increased to match the stake centers, that which is what we requested of him, I think we approve this. And then we work with both the planning commission and Robert Nelson to get this next um, phase, you know, and the next uh development standard um, agreements in place prior to the approval of the next phases, so that it is, that he has a heads up that this is happening.
I think that's appropriate. And, and he's already stated that we give him the requirements and he will implement them. And I think that, that that's basically what he's waiting for, is for us to give him what it is that we want.
He's always been very good about that.
Okay, so then at this point, Okay, so then at this point, I have a motion from Kinnison and a second from Ottley. Do you want, Jody, can you repeat that motion? It was that we-
We approved the, the plot as, the, uh, final plot as, as submitted by the planning commission.
Okay.
Right, right.
Do you want to leave, you want, you want to stick, stick with that motion then? You're good with that?
I do.
Okay, and you're good with your, Bob?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one additional question. Can Wayne answer that if that sidewalk was, um, the width was increased to match the stake center prior to my vote?
What's, it's five foot wide.
What's the stake center? Six feet?
Five.
I think it's five.
I think it's five feet also.
Okay, can, I mean, I would like you to include that if at all possible, Doral, just to be sure.
But is, isn't that part of a, a different, uh, plat in that that's on the other side of the road?
No, no.
Or am I got things twisted?
That's what I'm looking at is if you look at the, the map on uh, DT zero one, it shows the five-foot walking path north and east side of the road. I, again, these are, you know, if we had Corbett here, he could probably answer most of these questions because he can read these things really well, but it's not, it's not entirely clear to me where, where that is on some of the other, um, roads. But I'm guessing that it's in all, all the other streets. The, the problem is, is that the Summit Creek Road detail does not show that five-foot walking path. Now, I'm not saying it's not there, I'm just saying the detail does not indicate it. It does on the all other streets detail. So you do see the five-foot walking path on that one. So, do we have a five-feet walking path there or not? Again, it's just, I wish I had Corbett here to answer that question.
Yeah, who let him go on vacation?
It's his anniversary.
Oh.
Well, just, just let the record show that it is needed and we appreciate him.
Yes.
Yes.
We miss him.
But yeah, the, I mean, again, so me, the, the biggest question I have is I just have lingering questions on this plat. I'm not talking about the other side of the road. I have, we have issues that we need to resolve there too. But when I'm looking just at this plat, I just have some lingering questions I'd like to have answered before we approve it. That's it. If we got those answers, I'd, I'd be good to go on this plat.
Can you get your answers from the planning commission here and now?
Are you concerned that a five-foot does not go into the cul-de-sac?
Uh, no, the, the, so if, if you're looking at this, I can show you easier here. So this says the road typical all other streets and there it does show a walking path. But if you look at the Summit Creek Road portion, it doesn't show anything here. So I don't know what's there.
Because the, the sidewalk is, is required on the other side of the street, not impacting this plat. This plat along Summit Creek does not require a sidewalk. It's the other side.
And that I will absolutely vote no against because we're gonna have people walking on what to get down to that church.
Across the street and walk on the sidewalk? When it's built, I mean, we-
That's what he's saying.
Yes.
We, we, we can't ask him to build the whole thing out at one time, can we?
Um, I don't think that's what I'm requesting, but I am requesting that since this is the plat that we're approving, that it should have sidewalks at least in this plat.
Okay, so that's not a requirement that's, uh, that's in our building construction.
It does show it there, but that says all other streets and that's the part I don't understand. But you come back here and you have these lines that appear to look like a sidewalk. But again, I can't answer what those lines mean. I don't know what they mean.
Can you share your document so we can see which page you're looking at?
I wish I could, but all I can share with you is the page number PP oh six and then DT oh one.
Can you pull that up, Jody?
Which page number is that?
Uh, PP oh six and then DT oh one, which is the very next page.
All mine is that regular page number.
So, uh, actually, so Bob, look at, it, it's actually page eleven of the Four Seasons Plat D seven fourteen twenty-one. See that document? Go to page eleven, that's PP oh six.
Yes, it is.
Upper right-hand corner will say PP oh six. And then the next DT oh one.
Thank you.
It's twelve. Dave, where are you seeing that? So on, on PP, the first one?
Yeah, so on PP, you see, this is Jason's Cove.
Uh huh.
And you see the, these three lines that come from somewhere and, and come into Jason's Cove and all around.
Uh huh.
I think that's a sidewalk. But since it's not laid as such, there's no way for me to definitively say, yeah, that's the sidewalk.
Bob, did you say something?
I think that, as, as I understand and recall, and Wayne, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but there are sidewalks around on both sides on Jason's Cove and, and all of those other coves. And it stops when it gets onto Summit Creek because our building construction requires it to be on the other side of the road. And so I think those three lines have to do with the curb that is there and then, um, and, and then I, I don't see anything that really tells me that it's a sidewalk. And we have the same thing on
Right there.
this other cove.
Aye.
Opposed gas.
It looks like four, but four feet of sidewalk and two feet of gutter.
Yeah, four feet isn't wide enough.
Five feet, whatever, that's, that's the, the feet.
Yeah, but yeah.
There's a five feet of walking path north and east side of roads. Is that what you're talking, it's a concrete on one side.
Okay, if, so if you go to, um, the PDF page number eight. Look, look at bullet, bullet number one. It says construction, construct pedestrian access ramp heard Willen Hill City Code Standard, okay? And then you go down in here and right there at the curve, um, on the left-hand side of, of Jason's Cove, you see number one and they have drawn in there the ramp that gives it ADA access to the sidewalk.
Hey.
Is there a ramp on the other side?
I don't see one.
So you can leave the street, you just can't keep going?
Well.
Okay.
I don't, I also don't see that there's a typical note on there saying that, um, if you go down on page nine, you have the same, uh, number one at the same location on that, on that corner. But I don't, I don't see it on the other side of the road and, and I think Kerry has a good point. I think that, that, that may be a concern. Um, and I would just like to understand what that means. Uh, because I would have thought that it would have been on both sides, on, on both of those curves, the same things down on the next one shows that same ramp.
I think that three line is the, is the curb.
Curve and gutter.
Curtain.
I, I agree with that, Wayne. That's exactly what I, I, it's the, uh, you know, if you're looking at, at, at one of them, there, there's one of the lines that represent, uh, the backside of it, the other one represents the, the top of it, and then the third one is the one joining it in the road. So that's why there's three lines there. It would be nice if there was a uh, profile of this, then, then we could see that. I don't, you know, there's construction notes. Nothing about sidewalks or passways other than that ramp.
So if you guys were to say he had to put a sidewalk in over there, can you, I don't think he's got room. So are you willing to modify or give him variance on setbacks or what? You know, those requirements to allow him to still have his lots there?
Well, let me ask a different question. Did we expect, did the planning commission expect that there were sidewalks around these cul-de-sacs?
Yeah.
So.
They asked the question, it was answered.
So is this? So.
That's what's there, it's five-foot walking path.
Yeah.
North and east side.
Man, I wish Bob was here.
No, you wish that Corbett was here. Oh, Bob missed it. So if you're, if you go to page twelve, um, there is a side view of what the curb, it's called a twenty-four inch modified curb detail. And you can see what the top of that curb looks like, that it's a, it's an angular one and there's a one-inch radius curve at the bottom that, um, that it's, uh, that the, the backside of it is six inches high from the low point. And you see that? And then if you scroll down to the next one, you have a view of the street. And you can see that there's a two foot, that you have the tree and right to the right of the tree, it says two feet. That is your curb detail that you just looked up in the top there. It's, it's twenty-four inches, which equals two feet. And there is, uh, nothing in this draw. Oh, okay. If you go down to the next one, you, uh, you see a fifty-six inch road typical on the right-hand side, on the other side of the tree, you have a five-foot path north and east side of road. So right there it is. It's gonna be on both sides of the road. I don't know if, and, and that says that it's Summit Creek. And so there, there, there it is. It, the, the path will be on both sides of the road.
So, Bob?
North, yes, sir.
That's exactly what I was pointing out earlier. And what it appears to me is that this is all other streets, what you're looking at there with the five-inch walking path.
That's correct.
I'm not seeing is the upper one, it kind of leaves that area blank. And so I don't know what's supposed to be there.
Well, those are good questions. Um, I'm just reading some of the notes.
Bob, even if you look at the block, but on that page, it's got the five-foot walking path on one side, but it doesn't have it on the other.
So what does MTS stand for? Not to, I don't know. Because that, that, that helps us. So there, it's a fifty-six foot road type and, um, the, the part that has me confused is, is the words there with the five feet walking path, north and east side. So north and east side, that, those are not opposing. So, so that's, um, so that's talking about when the road curves, when it curves around it, it heads more easterly, then the sidewalk remains on the north side, continuing its arc. And so, so this is correct. Then, I understand now what those words are saying. So, so there is no sidewalk on the west side, but, or the south side of the roads, you know, heading east-west. And, uh, so there's only one sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah, the con, the concrete is five inches thick and the base is four. Um.
That's already in.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is, I, I've just given a little bit of detail there. So, so this, this is showing that-